We good?
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay, we have a, so we have sixty-seven speakers signed up for today's work session.
Just about.
So, you know, some, most will stay on, I'm sure, so we're going to keep this meeting rolling, and let's get through it. Okay, so the first point of business today, this is for legislative session twenty-twenty, day twenty-three. We are going to turn to page twenty-eight. And the first is a contract, and that is Craig Biddinger from the Fire Department. Did I say that right? Biddinger?
Yes.
Are you, are you there?
I'm here.
There you go, okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the County Council. I'm Fire Director Craig Biddinger and currently assigned to the Fire Department Logistics Division, and presenting a contract for maintenance and repair of Stryker brand medical equipment as it falls under my parameters. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Stryker Corporation to provide maintenance and repairs to Stryker brand medical equipment used in the county's maintenance, including stair chairs, transport cots, and power load systems on as needed basis. The contract starts on June first, twenty-twenty, and continues until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. It may not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars unless approved by the council. If approved, the contract will continue through April thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, and will renew automatically for a four-year, for additional one-year periods, with the option to extend the initial term and any renewal term an additional one-hundred-and-twenty days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the first-year term or for the entire five-year or four-month term, including the renewal or the extension periods. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services for the entire contract term. Estimated compensation total is one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the entire five-year and four-month term, including the renewal and extension period.
Thank you. Do any of the members have any questions or comments? Okay, then, that was easy, thank you. Second item is on page one, as well, on page one, and it's Bill eighty-six twenty, and I believe we have Lawrence Richardson, Deputy Director of Direct, I'm sorry, Deputy Director Finance and Administrator, Administration for the Health Department. That was a mouthful, I'm sorry, Lawrence.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. The administration is requesting a sixty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight-dollar supplemental appropriation of state funds to the Surveillance and Quality Improvement Grant Program of FY twenty-one, the State Department of Health approved the expansion to utilize these funds to pay for both fetal and infant mortality case reviews, as well as child fatality case reviews as part of the grant budget. The additional funds will be used to pay the salary costs for conducting the case reviews and providing outreach to providers as a preventative initiative.
Thank you. Do any of the members have any questions? From Mr. Richardson? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is on page thirty-nine. And we have Director Pete Gutwold from the Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. The Department of Planning is requesting the County Council's approval of a proposal for a fiscal year twenty-one grant award. The grant recommendation is for six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars, federal community development block grant funds to be awarded to the Community Assistance Network to provide eviction prevention assistance to county residents impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The Community Assistance Network will provide one-hundred-and-eighty-six households directly impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic with eviction prevention assistance of up to three months of rental or utility assistance. As you know, this went through the fourteen-day letter, however, the Community Assistance Network disclosed in its project application that two members of its Board of Directors are affiliated with the Baltimore County Government. Neither of these two identified or members participated in the grant application review or approval process.
Thank you, Mr. Gutwold. So, just to be clear, this grant agreement is another layer of protection for folks that may be suffering from job loss from COVID?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the funding again, I'm sorry?
It's six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars for this. It's a phase-two of the eviction prevention program. That was another two million dollars that was awarded to like five or six applicants, so.
Right, right. So you're saying phase, do you believe there'll be another phase?
I don't believe so. I'm looking at Colleen, she's saying, yes, there may be another phase.
So as long as we're like in the state of emergency, do you feel like these phases could continue to make sure people don't fall upon evictions?
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members, from Mr. Gutwold? All right, thank you, sir, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number four. Go to page four. We have three bills, eighty-seven twenty, eighty-eight twenty, and eighty-nine twenty, and I believe that Acting Director Chris McCollum from Workforce and Economic Development will be covering those. Mr. McCollum, you with us?
I am.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Councilman. For eighty-seven twenty, actually, the other two I don't have in front of me, so you may have to come back to me, but eighty-seven twenty is, the administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of private funds from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund Incorporated totaling twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to the Cities for Financial Empowerment Funds Gift and Grants Fund Program. The fund will be used to develop a plan to improve banking literacy of participants in the county's FY twenty-twenty-two Summer Youth Employment Program.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? All right, hearing none. You'll get back to us on eighty-eight twenty and eighty-nine twenty? Okay, just let, just let me know when you're back on.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item five, which is on page thirty-two, and it's a contract, and we have Deb Shindel with us from Property Management.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. I'm here to present a request for the approval of a contract for eastern lock and access systems to perform maintenance inspections to the automatic doors that are in our facilities. What they do is maintain the doors in a working order and make any repairs as necessary. This is a one-year contract that was competitively bid, and we may exercise the option to renew it at one, four-year additional years. At no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor in this agreement extend more than two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Okay, I would just like to say thank you for the wonderful photos that you sent me from Double Rock Park. We've been waiting such a long time to have work done. Of course, you know, that was a bond bill that was passed a few years ago, and I had been out there recently and saw some of it, but it was so great for you to put it in, in all the photos next to each other, and you can really get a feel for how much work that was done. And I know that we're going to be going out there soon to see it together, so I'm really excited about that, and the people that enjoy that park from all over, not just Parkville, are very thankful. I've had quite a few people reach out and wanted to thank the county for making those improvements and also dealing with the awful erosion problems that we've had with the park, so I just wanted to pass that thank you on.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on since no one has any questions. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next is item six, on page thirty-six. And we have Amy Grassi from Real Estate Compliance. Ms. Grassi, you with us?
What was?
I saw her earlier.
Yep, I'm here, I was having technical difficulties.
Okay.
Now, let me go back here, okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. The administration is seeking approval of a contract to acquire seven-point-six-nine acres of land in Randalls Town at eighty-eight hundred Greens Lane for the price of four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars for passive open space. This will be reimbursed with program open space funds and was appraised. The two appraisals came in at four-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand and six-hundred-and-ninety thousand, I believe, and when those were so far apart, we reached out to DNR because the property was actually listed on the market, and obviously, when you, when you list something on the market, you have your own idea of what the value is. The listing price was the four-ninety-seven that we are paying, and DNR agreed, and our in-house appraisers agreed upon review of all the data that four-hundred-and-ninety-seven was a fair value, and incidentally, it's within the twenty percent of the four-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, which was the lower appraisal that we had obtained, and given all of those factors, DNR was comfortable that a third appraisal would be kind of a silly waste of money and time, and so we have proceeded with an offer at the listed value. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Grassi? What area is this, Ms. Grassi?
Randalls Town.
Madam Chair, it's right near the community center. We have the community center, and it's a part of our expansion of green space and open space, which came out of the Liberty Road corridor study.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Grassi's hearing no comments or questions. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
We're moving on to item seven, which is on page twenty-four. It's another contract, and we have Mr. Edblaze, the Director of Office of Budget and Finance. Mr. Blades, are you with us?
Yeah, I'd like to start over if I may, now that I'm on mute. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Change Healthcare Technology Enabled Services LLC to provide billing and collection services for emergency medical transport provided by the county's Fire Department and the volunteer fire companies. The contract commenced July first and will be terminated should the contract not receive council approval. If approved, the contract will continue through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, with five additional one-year renewals. The maximum compensation for the full ten-year, ten-month term may not exceed eight-point-two million dollars. The billing and collection of emergency medical transports generates over twenty-five million in revenue for the general fund. The FY twenty-one revenue estimate is twenty-six-point-five million. The revenues are generated by billing private health insurance companies, Medicaid and Medicare for EMS transports. County residents that are uninsured or underinsured are not responsible for any payment, and non-county residents are billed a portion of the fees not covered by insurance. The contract is a piggyback of a competitive bid by the county of Fairfax, Virginia. The documents in the Fairfax County bid advertise piggybacking of multiple jurisdictions to ensure the lowest bid. They did receive seven bids and awarded the contract in May of twenty-twenty. Our purchasing bureau was unable to obtain documentation of the Fairfax County Award documents until after the July first effective date, based on their rules, and this did hinder our ability to obtain council approval prior to the effective date of the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Blades. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All right, Mr. Blades, thanks. Next, we're moving on to item eight, which is, was this the appointment, Mr. Boswood?
Yes, Madam Chair.
You want to cover that?
I just wanted to make sure we had, we had kind of done our due diligence. I believe Ms. Bel Castro invited the nominee to the WebEx. I don't think we got a reply. I don't know if, if the person is on or not. Chris?
Yes, um, they, Ms. Davie was invited, however, I did not get a reply, an acceptance for the invite, or a decline, so I'm not sure. But she is not on, so.
Okay. Okay. Are we just moving on?
I think so, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay.
I mean, these, these, these positions, you know, tend to be not controversial, and I'm not saying that it's not a good idea to have them on from time to time, but I don't know that it's, it's one that is particularly difficult.
Do we have a resume?
I think we, I think we do. I'd have to check, I'd have to check the cover letter.
Does this circulate the resume before the vote on Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Would work?
Yep, we'll do that.
She is a new appointment, correct, not a reappointment?
I think she is a new appointment.
Yeah, she's a new appointment, yeah, so it would be great to have a resume, so if we don't have one, can we ask Ms. Davie for a resume?
Yes.
Since she wasn't here to introduce herself?
Yep, I will check the cover letter and see what we have, and if we don't have one, I'll, I'll ask the administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item number nine. Where is it, number nine? On page forty-two, Resolution one-oh-two dash twenty, and we have James Benjamin, our county attorney of the Office of Law.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council.
Good afternoon.
Resolution one-oh-two dash twenty seeks approval of the continuation of a local state of emergency initially declared by the county executive on March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. As you'll recall, on September eighth, twenty-twenty, the council authorized continuation of the state of emergency for additional twenty-five days from September twelfth, twenty-twenty. It is likely that the state of emergency will continue beyond October seventh, twenty-twenty, and so we request the state of emergency be continued for an additional thirty days from October seventh, twenty-twenty, and that will end on November sixth, twenty-twenty, or until the county's executive declares the end of the state of emergency, whichever occurs first. I would note that a state of emergency and was proclaimed by Governor Hogan on March fifth, twenty-twenty. It was most recently renewed on September eighth, twenty-twenty, and the state of emergency issued by the governor is still in effect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we have a speaker. Well, let's, let's see if any of the members, do any of the members have any questions or comments from Mr. Benjamin? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Bel Castro, we have a speaker signed up for this resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a speaker signed up, however, they're not in the attendee list. It was Regil Montoya. Resolution one-oh-two twenty, but they're not on the list of attendees.
Okay. Guess you're off the hook, Mr. Benjamin?
All right.
So we can't find them, right, Chris? If they're not, if they're not there, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, I want to remind, this will give us the opportunity real quick to remind anyone who registers to testify, you cannot call in by phone and testify because I have right now, we have one-hundred-and-eleven attendees on this meeting, and I have to scroll through this one-hundred-and-ten, one-hundred-and-eleven attendee list to find you, to unmute you so that you can testify. Hence, the reason why you cannot call in by telephone, because if you call in by phone, I can only see the first four or five digits of the phone number, which is very difficult to find.
Hi, Lisa, it's Stacy. This is a quick question for you. Chris McCollum?
I just muted Stacy.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Benjamin, since there are no questions, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Chris McCollum is back with us, Acting Director, so we can go back to page seven for Bill eighty-eight dash twenty. Mr. McCollum?
Yes, sorry about that, I apologize. Eighty-eight twenty is, the administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling one-point-six-two-eight million dollars to the county's U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration revolving loan fund gifts and grant fund program. The funds will be used to provide low-interest loans to eligible county small businesses in the amount of one-point-four-eight million to help them recover from the economic impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and for related administrative costs in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars.
That sounds great. Are there any questions or comments from any of the members? All right, hearing none. Ms. McCollum, if you'd like to move to Bill eighty-nine dash twenty, folks, that's page ten.
Yes, again, thank you, I apologize for the little bump earlier. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of state funds totaling sixteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars to the summer program and community arts development gifts and grants fund program to increase the amount appropriated to the match, the actual amount of the grant award. The funds will be used to provide grant funding in the ranges of, in the range of one-thousand to ninety-five hundred dollars to Baltimore County-based cultural and arts organizations for specific projects such as performances and exhibits in the county.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? All righty, thank you, Ms. McCollum.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to item ten, which is on page forty-three, and that would be Mr. Marx. David, are you going to speak on amending the Perry Hall Community Plan?
So, yes, this is a technical correction to legislation that we passed very recently. Legislation said that a new business in the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District had to implement street scape improvements entirely within the district. We really meant to say just along Bel Air Road, so that's the correction.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Councilman Marx? All right, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
The next item, council business, we're going to start with page thirteen, Bill ninety dash twenty. Mr. Marx?
Thank you very much. This bill requires that any parking in the Calson Police Precinct be done on a paved, durable, or dustwood surface. This is a response to over-parking we've seen on people's lawns. It is limited again to the police precincts that covers Calson.
Oh, thank you. Any members have any questions or comments, Mr. Marx? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no one signed up for that, correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right, next, we're moving on to page fourteen.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My apologies, and with all the confusion and people chatting with me while I'm trying to help you at the meeting, we had two speakers for the MB two, the, the grant agreement. Mr. Gutwold already testified, is that correct?
He did.
Okay, we did have two speakers for that item.
Are they still with us?
Um, let me see. My apologies.
That's okay.
I have a lot of irons in the fire here.
I bet, and we appreciate you, plus you have us seven to deal with.
So, yes, I do see both, it's just two speakers, and I see both of them on, so.
Okay, so, so, Councilman Quirk, hold on just a minute, and we'll get to Bill ninety-one twenty, and we are going to go back to page thirty-nine with the grant agreement for CAN, the eviction prevention assistance, and let's have our first speaker.
Okay, and Madam Chair, just a reminder, it's two minutes. Once your two minutes is finished, and this is for all speakers at today's session, you will automatically be muted. We don't have time to give a warning, so be mindful of your time, and everyone will have two minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
First speaker would be Mr. Ira Adams. Mr. Adams?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, my apologies, we did not mean to skip over you. You may begin.
So I have a question, so how long is the grant agreement last?
Sir, this is not a Q and A session. This is not a Q and A session, sir, it is a testimonial for two minutes.
Right.
Basically, I'm trying, pushing for the renters to get rent assistance for as long as possible. And hopefully, it keeps going until, I guess, when this is over.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for holding on. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Barbara Hopkins. Let me get to her.
Oh, from?
My speaker sheet doesn't tell me if she's with, affiliated with a group.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, Madam Chair, I was actually speaking to Councilman Quirk's bill.
No, actually, we thought you were signed up for something else. You signed up for Councilman Quirk's bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll get back to you.
Hold on for one second.
Barb will be, we'll be there in a minute, we'll get right back to you.
The other person isn't on the list, so.
Okay, Barb, just hold on, and we're going to get to another person that was signed up for another bill. Okay? Okay, Chris, go ahead. I can't hear you, what happened?
I'm sorry, that concludes, that concludes all the speakers for MB two, Madam Chair.
So we're going to move on to Mr. Quirk's bill now, okay? I'm sorry, I just shut down. Hold on. Okay, now we're going to move on to page fourteen, Bill ninety-one dash twenty. Councilman Quirk, are you with us?
I am indeed, thank you, Madam Chair. Bill ninety-one dash twenty, amends the requirements for a plan unit development application. Specifically, the bill requires a PUD applicant to disclose the name of any person who has any financial interest in the PUD, and the name of any person who owns or has an ownership interest in the property subject to the plan unit development. And if the person disclosed is an entity rather than an individual, the PUD applicant must disclose the name of any partner, member, director, or any other person with ownership interest in the entity. You know, it's good government, it's good to know who's working and what projects, and it's also, I think, a very ethical thing to understand and a moral thing to also know who, who you're dealing with. And then, in addition, this bill also imposes a time limit on the introduction of PUD approval resolutions to the county council for consideration, and if a PUD approval resolution has not been introduced within one-hundred-and-eighty days of the last post-submission community meeting, the PUD applicant must repeat the post-submission community meeting process. And I'm also considering a possible amendment to basically just make the PUD application effectively, effectively null and void and just started from scratch if, in other words, a PUD can't, can't just sit there on a desk unlimited, it has an expiration date if it's not ultimately put into the hopper for council approval. So that's the intent of Bill ninety-one dash twenty.
That, that sounds like a good one. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Councilman Quirk? Okay, hearing none. We have Barb Hopkins signed up to speak, correct, Ms. Bel Castro?
Yes, Madam Chair, my apologies, I should try putting my glasses on so I can see. Let me call upon her.
Okay.
Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bel Castro and members of the council. Ms. Bell Castro and members of the council. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Neighbor States, I want to thank Councilman Quirk for this bill and to offer a couple of recommendations for strengthening it and to urge its passage. The bill adds an important measure of transparency to the PUD process and requiring more detail about who's behind the application. It also strengthens the process considerably by requiring a resubmission where a council resolution is not forthcoming within one hundred and eighty days of the last post-submission community meeting. We would suggest as recommendations for further strengthening the bill the following. First, define what is meant by financial interest in section thirty-two dash four, two forty-two B seven, and then make it clear in section thirty-two for two forty-two D one, two, that any resubmission must be a proposal that is substantially different from the original submission. So we thank you again for this opportunity to comment, thank Councilman Quirk for his great work here, and urge that the bill be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Are there any other speakers for that bill? Ms. Bell Castro? Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure before we move on. Okay, next, we're going to move to page fifteen, and I'll take a look at Bill ninety-two dash twenty. Councilman Catch?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I had all kinds of problems, I'm on my iPad, and so that's why there's no picture. Bill ninety-two twenty clarifies legislation that the council passed about a month ago, clarifies that only areas, only roads in the Big Gunpowder Falls area where the areas are marked "no parking" does the two hundred dollar fine apply. Either the way the bill was written or interpreted by the police, they, the police, were ticketing everybody, even if they parked in areas where parking was allowed. So this simply clarifies the situation, and I can tell you that a lot of people will be very happy next Monday when this bill passes because it's created a real nightmare. So this should resolve it.
So, Mr. Catch, what you're saying is the bill that we had previously passed, which was allowing no parking for two point one five miles, you are now going to have places where people can park or additional places they cannot park?
No, what the situation is right now, the roads that are included in the Big Gunpowder Falls legislation, areas are marked "no parking," some areas aren't marked anything, and the areas that are parked that are labeled "no parking," the two hundred dollar fine applies. Everywhere else, it does not apply. So if it's not marked, you can park there.
Just to have a brief conversation with you, because we have a lot to cover tonight, I will want to have a conversation with you about this, or I will have to abstain on this vote, because I voted for the last one, because, of course, believing that you know best for your district, and this was an issue, you came to the council and said this was an issue. After we passed that, I got thirty-nine either letter, a hard copy letter, Facebook post, or a email, and I think Councilman Marx got a few as well, people that were very upset about it, and I had no idea the stretch was two point one five miles. That's a lot of road to say "no parking" on. I talked to people that said they had came, they attended a few meetings, and in those meetings, trash was an issue, but the conversation of never letting people allow, allowed to park it all on that road wasn't discussed, so they were upset about that. And then I had two people write me very detailed letters saying that, not you, but the people that were complaining about the parking, it was racially motivated, that it was both brown and black people, the majority of people coming out on a hot summer day with their children wanting to enjoy that park. And I also had a veteran reach out to me, wrote me a letter, and said that this is the only way that he could get in and out of that area with his disability and being able to park there. So there have been some, I've heard about issues from folks that weren't in my district, and they called me because the sign that was erected on this roadway says "no parking allowed" for the next two point one five miles, and it has the bill number and county council members. And I've never seen a sign like that ever in the county. I never, I didn't get an answer back on how that was erected there, because most of our new, all of our new parking signs say the, the number in the book, you know, that says "no parking." It never says county council members, bill, and the bill number. So I don't know if you can answer that, how that sign got there?
Well, first of all, the legislation that passed applies to a lot more than two points some miles. I have no idea how many miles of roads, but they're all over the place. The intention of the bill was never, never to outlaw parking along any of these roads, never. I assume you're talking about Notch Cliff Road.
Yeah, when we passed that bill, no parking.
Well, it was intent, well, this legislation was simply an addition to a bill that passed two years ago that applied a higher parking fine to no parking areas along Moncton Road.
Right.
And when it was expanded, the bill ended up being "no parking anywhere," and it was a mistake. It was simply a mistake, and, you know, it was never, no one ever, it was not my intention or anybody's intention to eliminate parking in, on any of these roads, never. As far as the sign goes, I have no clue why that sign was put up with the bill number and the council members, I have no idea. But this will resolve the problem, though, because it will allow parking where there's not any, no parking signs.
Right, because I think we discussed, I think we talked about this before, and I don't know, maybe the county or the state, or maybe this fixes the issue that the neighbors were having with the parking, but it's such a beautiful natural resource that we want people to use.
Of course.
We don't want to say, you can't, you know, you can't use it, and so we definitely don't want to have people not being able to park anywhere and get to that resource.
That was never, ever the intention of the bill, never, never, never.
Well, thank you. I feel much better about that, thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, wait a minute, Ms. Rogers had her hand up first.
I will, I will check on the sinus.
It's big, it's a great big sign.
I will check on.
It says "no parking," that's two point one five miles, and it has the, I forgot the bill number, and it has the bill number, county council. I've never seen a sign like that ever, and I just don't know how.
I will check with DPW, because I know they were charged with getting the signs developed and put up, and I'll find out what that was.
It's different looking, too. I think it's a white background with, Wade, does it have red letters? I think it has red letters.
I'll check with the department.
Yeah, it's something I've never seen before, and so I just wanted to bring it to Wade's attention. I didn't know if he'd been by to see it or not. Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
I will do that.
Councilman Marx? Councilman Marx, you had something you want to say?
I got it. Look, I have always respected councilman courtesy. I can't think of one time I've gone against councilman courtesy. Each one of us handles problems in our own ways. You know, I had terrible parking problems along the Gunpowder Falls and Perry Hall. I didn't put in bills like this. And this bill had repercussions in my district, particularly at Notch Cliff Road, which is right on the border with my district, and I kind of fear Councilwoman Bevan's concern. I feel like, I feel like a lot of these issues are going to go away once the COVID goes away, and I just, I would have preferred to just wait this out. But, Councilman Catch, I'm happy you're taking another look at it, but in the future, I'm going to really be taking another look at things like this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I lost where I was. Okay. Does anybody have any more questions for Councilman Catch? Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to page sixteen, Bill ninety-three dash twenty. Mr. Catch, Councilman Catch?
Yes, this deals with the Hunt Valley Town Center about an assisted living facility, making that facility eligible for property tax credit. Where this bill comes from is if this assisted living facility had been the product of a planned unit development or within a commercial revitalization district, it would have qualified. So basically, this bill would qualify that facility, and in addition, it has to be a portion of a mixed-use development and must be located within five hundred feet of a MTA light rail station.
Thank you, Councilman. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All righty, let's move on to page seventeen. That also is Councilman Catch, Bill ninety-four dash twenty.
Yes, Bill ninety-four dash twenty comes from, I had a number of constituents that live along Duncan Hill Road, and there's a hemp-growing facility that has been proposed for that property that has been approved by the state of Maryland. A lot of the people in that area are very concerned about possible health risks from the growing of hemp. And what this bill does, hemp has not been allowed to be grown in the U.S. since before two thousand seventeen, so this is relatively new. The state has had a pilot program, which is in effect until October thirty-first of this year, and the Duncan Hill landowners did get permission to plant hemp. What this bill does, it makes hemp, applications of hemp farming, they're going to be special exception, and that way, people who have concerns about health could attend the special exception hearing and let their concerns be known and hopefully resolved. The, there's two other parts of the bill that I am going to change. Right now, the federal government and the state government require that hemp facilities be a thousand feet from a school, a thousand feet from a park, and what I would like to do is change it to a thousand feet from a residence. So that, and then the next part, about fifty feet from the property line, that, that's going to be changed. So last Thursday, I had a Zoom meeting with a number of proponents of the bill. This coming Thursday, hopefully, we're going to have the opponents and proponents on another Zoom call, and hopefully, we'll be able to resolve the issue there. But it's another issue of openness, transparency, and when people have a concern about their health, it seems to me they should have the ability to express those concerns. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Councilman Catch? Okay, we're going to move to page nineteen. We have Bill ninety-five.
Madam Chair?
I think we have speakers.
We have speakers for this bill.
Oh, I asked. Oh, I didn't ask, okay. Let's start.
Okay, Madam Chair, just a reminder, it's two minutes for testimony, and our first speaker is Allison Phillips. Let me find Ms. Phillips on our list.
Okay, and this is for Bill ninety-three twenty, correct?
Ninety-four twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Phillips. I'm a resident of Sparks and live on Duncan Hill Road. I represent over twelve homes that surround a registered industrial hemp-growing site on Duncan Hill. Within one thousand feet of this site on Duncan Hill, there are approximately thirty-two homes, many of whom have lived here for over twenty-five years. We have over one hundred and seventy-five signatures opposing this site. Learning of the abrupt presence of this registered site in our backyard has devastated our community, knowing that we, too, will be experiencing the ill effects of hemp that the residents of Broadway have been living with for two seasons. There is little available information for residents as we worried, are worried about the unknowns of our public safety, health, and welfare. We know there are ill effects of the hemp plant affecting the health and quality of life of surrounding residents of hemp sites as experienced by the residents of Broadway and now soon to be our own community. There is also a concerning lack of data around the long-term health effects of hemp terpene emissions and environmental impact. Who is going to collect this data, and how will we know we aren't at risk? The Hemp Research Pilot Program restricted industrial hemp sites within one thousand feet of schools and public recreation areas. Our schools and employers have invested in the technology infrastructure, shifting learning and business to our homes, making the case for step backs to apply to our homes. We recognize we live in an area zone RC two, however, many families moved into this area long before Maryland legislation was passed legalizing hemp. The hemp plant was illegal when the Maryland Right to Farm Law of nineteen eighty-one was passed as well. Bill ninety-four twenty allows Baltimore County to manage the reintroduction of the hemp plant into the community following a fifty-year ban, and protects our family and the community from the ill effects of the hemp plant, and not to be worried that hemp-growing sites popping up in the backyards of our homes, schools, and parks without any notification, objection, or awareness. Thank you for your consideration.
Next speaker, Madam Chair, is Kevin Addicks.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
You may begin.
I appreciate that. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the council, I appreciate your time on this, and Councilman Catch, thank you for your consideration of our comments. I'm Kevin Addicks, founder of Growin' Ford and the Maryland Coalition, which represents hemp farmers, processors, labs, and retailers. We're concerned about a few aspects of the legislation. First, it is important to note that hemp is an agricultural crop. The state has a strong right-to-farm statute that does, in fact, protect this crop, as noted by the letter sent to the council by the Attorney General's Office. Regardless of whether it's part of a state or USDA pilot product, it is a plant, it is in the ground, and farmers grow it, so it is protected under the right to farm. The legislation conflates hemp with medical cannabis in its terminology, which is very concerning to this industry who has to abide by all sorts of rules and regulations to ensure that this plant is never, ever close to becoming or being conflated or combined with medical cannabis in how it's regulated or its terminology. The setbacks from the property lines seem very extreme. There aren't many farms in Baltimore County, which has shrinking farms, where crops can be planted two thousand feet, one thousand feet from a residential property line. A few added points, there are no studies showing negative health effects from hemp. You may not like the smell, but it's not dangerous. As a longtime former resident of the Hareford Zone and now living right on Padonia Road, I can attest to the fact that agriculture does smell at times. The legislature did vote down a similar bill, unfavorable this past session, and I will just, a point of clarification, the one-thousand-foot setback from schools and parks, which the councilman mentioned, is not related to ill effects, it's because the plant looks like marijuana, and it was to keep it out of view of children and away from parks. So that is where that came from. And finally, we all know that once farms are forced to sell and are forced to develop, they never come back to farm. So thank you for consideration.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Is our speaker still there?
Yes, he is.
Sir, so hemp, I always thought was a healing plant. It's in almost everything. I have, my dog's shampoo has hemp in it. I have clothes that have hemp in it. So where is the, why would residents be upset about the growing of hemp? I know that we're growing cannabis in District Three, correct?
That is true, and the concerns that... That is true. And the concerns that we have heard through testimony at the state level and through comments that we've seen online are about the concerns about the smell of hemp as it begins to ripen before harvest. So like many crops, the last number of weeks, they do begin to smell. And so that's where the concern tends to be. I don't think, I don't think folks are arguing the effects, the positive effects.
It's a smell. Okay. Well, I can contest, I had a friend that lived within a model pig farm. So.
Madam Chair.
Talk about smelling. I think all agriculture, you're right. Even hay, as it lays, can have a stinky smell. Councilman?
Yeah. I, the concerns that I got from constituents dealt with health concerns. And so this is why the legislation was put in. And I don't know why the thousand-foot regulation is there, dealing with the distance from a school and a park. But I know the state does not give any reason why the thousand-foot. And I'm trying to find out from the U.S. Department of Agriculture exactly why the federal government has, they're the ones that did the thousand feet from schools and parks.
I think he just explained that, no?
What's that?
Why it is a thousand feet away from schools.
No, he.
Cannabis plant.
That might be his guess.
His guess? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's, as I said, the complaints I'm getting are about the possible health risks, not the looks of the plant or the odors or anything like that. So.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I might.
Yeah, Councilman Quirk?
Yeah, to Councilman Catch, can you delineate, or can you talk more specifically? When you say health concerns from hemp, what specifically are you referencing there? I'm not quite sure I understand.
The people that have contacted me have said that they've had problems with some of their children who have respiratory issues are made more complicated by hemp. People who have asthma, they find that their conditions are more agitated from the hemp. And so that's, there's some of the complaints and concerns that I've received.
Is there any science on that or any kind of medical type of?
Well, this is what I.
Studies or anything, or is this more kind of just people voicing some possible concerns? I mean, do you have any data on this?
Well, this is, I just said before that the state has no data, but the federal government has this thousand-foot distance also in their regulations. And I'm trying to find out if, why they have this thousand-foot requirement. Is it because of health concerns or are there other reasons? So, you know, I, am I on still?
Yes.
Oh, good, because my lap, never mind, my iPad just went blank. So, okay. So I'm checking with the federal government now. And, you know, if the thousand feet is not needed, then I certainly am not going to have it in the bill. But we'll find out from the federal government.
I have another question, if you don't mind, Councilman Quirk. This is all new to me. Is hemp currently being grown in your district? You have hemp farms currently?
Uh, no.
Then how are you saying your constituents are having their asthma?
I didn't say.
Any worse?
People along Broadway, the current, the people who are next to the Broadway farm are supporting the people on Duncan Hill Road. And so much of the information that I came across came from the Broadway Road residents who have looked into this issue.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
This is Izzy. So Broadway is in the second district, and I think you're going to hear some compelling testimony tonight from residents that live nearby the hemp farm on Broadway. It's a, you know, this is a very difficult issue because it, the testimony that we're going to hear tonight is going to be so compelling. But there are, in the county code, protection for farmers. So it's a really difficult issue. But like I said, I think when you hear from some of the residents that have signed up from the Broadway Road area, it might offer some insights to both you and Councilman Quirk on their experience related to living next to a hemp farm.
Can, and this is just me being curious, because I don't know, can hemp be grown inside like cannabis?
I would assume. I have no idea.
I think it's more expensive.
Okay, but that would probably resolve the issue?
Well, it's an expensive resolution. I know that.
I'm just asking. My only issue is, you know, I have farmers in my district, of course, and not as many as you, obviously, but, you know, you know.
Thank you.
Like the gentleman said earlier, you know, it's an agricultural use. And, you know, we're saying, well, you can't, you can't grow, you can't have solar when you're a farmer, and you can't grow cannabis, you can't grow hemp, you can't grow this, you can't grow that. We just want you growing vegetables. Like, we just want you doing the same old, same old. And I know that I've heard so many farmers testify in the past on bills where they say, look, you know, I've been, we've been farming this land for generations, several generations. My family doesn't want to do this type of farming anymore. We want the ability to make our living doing something else on the land that we love. And I feel like that we are making that opportunity smaller and smaller for farmers.
Well, I fully support the expansion of what activities farmers can be involved in in order to financially support their farm. But as I said before, the people in Broadway, on Broadway, and have these health concerns. And I think whenever there's a health concern, we need to look into it and see if indeed it has any viability at all. So I certainly have no interest in limiting farmers and what they can grow and can't grow. If you remember, I'm the one that put in the legislation dealing with distilleries and breweries, et cetera, to give our farmers more options to make money. So this is just a situation is that we want to make sure that our constituents are going to live in a safe environment. I mean, this isn't like the pig smell. This isn't like, you know, noise at four o'clock in the morning or spreading manure. None of them, to my knowledge, are health hazards. But I want to make sure that this is not a health hazard. And as I said, we're working on it right now.
I'd be very curious. Please share that outcome with me because, I mean.
Oh, sure.
Hemp is sold as a healing product, you know, it's put in CBC, CBD. It's put in, did I say that right? You know, it's put in so many products as a healing product. So I would hate to think that just living close by a hemp farm, it would have an opposite effect on your health. And as far as the smell, I think pot probably stinks too when it's growing or dying.
Well, I can tell you that on Alsbury Road in Timonium, the marijuana-growing facility has a system that eliminates the odor.
Oh, so you can't smell it? Okay.
Not smell it. As far as CBD goes, I, I'm happy it works for you. When I visited the hemp farm a couple of weeks ago, first of all, I didn't smell anything. And I did get, I paid for it. I did get some CBD to rub on my wrist and knee to try to help with the pain. And unfortunately, it did no good whatsoever, but maybe.
I used it on my dog.
On your dog?
On my dog. It's in his shampoo.
It's expensive, I'll tell you.
It is, but it has a calming effect, so.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to something that the previous speaker, I think Mr. Addicks, what he said regarding hemp as being a protected crop under state law. And I just wanted some clarification, maybe from one of our attorneys that are in the meeting. Does that state law, do we know if that supersedes our land use authority?
Mr. Crandall, this is Tom Bostwick. I don't believe it does. This is, and I don't think, a preemption issue. It's somewhat similar to solar and maybe medical cannabis. And I don't mean in terms of the same product. I just mean in terms of analogy that, you know, both of those are regulated by the state. Of course, the state has the solar, I can't remember off the top, the, what is it called? The public solar or whatever it is. And then, of course.
Community solar.
Community, that, I'm sorry. And then there's now the pilot program for industrial hemp, and regulations have been enacted, have been promulgated. But that's all as part of the regulatory scheme of getting a license and that. That's not what, that's not the regulation in terms of the land use, which is what we're talking about here. And so, again, like solar and like medical cannabis, you have the ability, if you choose, to put some parameters on the use and what you all feel would be reasonable in that sense. So we wouldn't be preempted from doing that. And in fact, one reason why the state, the state bills failed is because, and we have letters from both the chair of the Senate Committee and the House Committee, was because they both felt that this was a more localized issue in terms of regulating and finding the, striking the proper balance between the farmers and the community.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bostwick.
Thank you.
Senator Hettleman put in the bill, and in her bill, she had that there could not be any hemp grown within two miles of a residence. So it really was restricted. And so, you know, as I said, I'm having this meeting on Thursday, and hopefully, we can come to some resolution to this issue.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Quirk?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'd be interested in the outcome of this meeting, Councilman Catch. And also, it's sort of really trying to ultimately find that balance, you know, find that balance between the farmers and between residents. And that's the hard question. I'm not sure that balance exists. I'm almost wondering if this is something like the Planning Board or some group could give us a little more direction on, or maybe we hold this bill for a little bit to try to work it out more, to make sure we're finding that balance where it's not anti-farmer, but it's also recognizing the, you know, the concerns of the residents. But I don't, you know, I'm no expert here. I don't pretend to be. But I don't think hemp has any health issues, except for, of course, the smell, which I can, I can understand the concerns of the residents. But this is, this is one we're definitely trying to, I can, I can see, try to find the balance. But it's a little more complicated than one might think. Thanks.
You're absolutely right. It's complicated. And in fact, I fully expect after Thursday's meeting that I may have to request delay in the final vote on the bill to give us more time to work on the issue. So, and of course, we do have the time because of the sixty-five-day extension for legislation.
Councilman Quirk, you may recall that the council, I think at the beginning of the year, passed a resolution to ask the Planning Board to monitor any regulations or any new issues related to hemp, because it is, in fact, a very new product in terms of growing it in Baltimore County. Just to give it some context, in the, for the pilot project, there are sixty-five, I think sixty, sixty to sixty-five hemp farms in Maryland, three of which are in Baltimore County. So just, and so, to give some context to it. And hopefully, the Planning Board will keep our, this council up to date with regulations and new studies related to growing hemp.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more speakers, Ms. Phil Castro?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Phil, okay.
Our next speaker is Michelle Pearlman. Ms. Pearlman?
I'm here. Ready?
You can give your testimony.
My name is Michelle Pearlman, and I support ninety-four twenty bill. My family has lived in our home thirty years, which abuts a two-year-old hemp field. Once the stench begins, we experience health issues we have never had before, but oddly disappeared after the last hemp was harvested last year. This has not only affected me and my neighbors, it affects people all across the country living near a hemp field. Please read their testimonies I have submitted over to so many of my neighbors. Local neighbors and people all across our country describe similar symptoms because we are all forced to breathe potentially hazardous substances from nearby hemp fields. This is frightening. I'm going to add lib here, CBD oil is not FDA-approved. Here are a few comments from across the country, taken comments for the hemp interim final rule. M. Dobbs of Longmont, Colorado. If we sit inside at night, the stench permeates our home, taints our belongings, makes my breathing issues worse. Audra Saldina of Marillo. This crop is the most nauseous smell odor I've encountered in my seventy-four years. It makes me nauseated, like anything I come across. Stephanie Mayo from California. We cannot live like this. Not only have our lives been disrupted, but some are suffering from severe allergies and breathing problems. Our neighborhood surrounding the eighteen-ten Broadway Road hemp farm has documented our symptoms and the level of odor in an app called Smell My City. I have submitted this report to you, and here's a summation. Twenty-five people, eye irritation. Twenty-six people, sore throats and.
Miss Pearlman, your two-minute part, um, up.
I have one paragraph. Please.
I'm sorry, but we have to keep the behind-limit.
We were actually told three minutes.
I understand that, but it does say on our website that the time can be changed at the discretion of the chair.
Well, counsel, you have our health in your hands. Please protect us by passing this bill.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, Richard, and I'm probably going to butcher his name. Shaika, Shaika, and let me find him on the list. Sir, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may begin your.
Okay, thank you. It's, my name is Richard Siaka, and I live in Louisville, close to, close to that farm. Look, we submitted a fifty-page, carefully researched PowerPoint where a lot of these questions about science are addressed. I'm just going to try to summarize some of these issues. Let's begin. First, hemp is a form of cannabis. It just doesn't have THC in it. It is FDA-regulated. It is not legal to sell supplements or food containing CBD. They're just sold all over the place. But the FDA has been trying to promulgate rules under which it'll be possible to purchase CBD products. I hope we can in time. But right now, what we're experiencing is breathing in potentially harmful cannabis terpenes called volatile thiols. Those are chemicals that make cannabis smell like skunk, and this is what it smells like. We inhale these, in particular, butane thiols, can lead to our reported symptoms. And Dr. Lee is going to. And uh Dr. Lee is going to provide testimony on what those symptoms are later. Uh, they can produce serious health effects. It's primarily brought to harvest CBD. This is what the FDA says about CBD. CBD has the potential to harm you. This is a quote. "And harm can happen even before you become aware of it." The FDA conspicuously warns us about CBD and liver damage. It has only approved one drug containing CBD, Epidiolex, which, like most drugs, can cause liver damage as dosages increase. We breathe in unapproved, uncontrolled dosages of everything the hemp field emits every four, seven for months. Many of our neighbors complain of nausea, which is the, can be a first symptom of liver disease. Uh, look, I'll, I'll skip other major medical problems and say this. This is about, this bill is about hemp and only hemp. It's a crop that has not been grown in Maryland or elsewhere since the 1930s. While hemp emissions may contain a dosage-sensitive active pharmaceutical ingredient, CBD, and other potentially dangerous chemicals like thiols, terpenes.
Sir.
Yes.
Please wrap up your last sentence. Your two minutes are up.
Um, there are no other ma- of longstanding agricultural products that are grown and have these types of threats. Not, not grain, not anything else that's grown. This is different than every other agricultural product. We own two farms. I don't, I'm not against farming. I'm not against CBD. Too much dosage, overdoseage leads to serious health risks.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Pam Warfield.
Okay.
Ms. Warfield?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
My name is Pam Warfield. I've lived in Duncan Hill for over 30 years. We're surrounded by livestock and crops, and I've always appreciated and adapted to these farm activities. Now, however, we feel threatened by an industrial hemp site within 1,000 feet of our property. When the Maryland Right to Farm Law was passed in 1981, hemp had already been illegal in the U.S. for 11 years. It continued to be illegal for another 37 years. Industrial hemp is not a traditional agricultural product, but rather a plant that until recently was considered illegal and is only now being reintroduced into the community. No one should assume that hemp can retroactively be defined as an agricultural product that affords protection under Maryland's Right to Farm Law. The law does not define an agricultural product, and the Maryland Court of Appeals has not addressed this issue. There are multiple new nuisances and medical conditions that this non-traditional plant can trigger. We have heard numerous testimonials, including those from the neighbors of the existing hemp facility located on Broadway, of the ill effects of hemp, and more research continues to emerge. We know that hemp remains precariously similar to an illegal substance. What we do not know is if the state has the staff to properly man- properly manage this heavily regulated plant or what the full impact hemp will have on public health. Given the status of federal and state laws, Baltimore County should limit the introduction of hemp into the community. This is the best way to reduce the potential barrage of conflicts between hemp growers and neighbors that will trigger numerous public or private nuisance or health complaints from the parents of schoolchildren and neighbors, of which hemp can be grown immediately next to any school in Baltimore County right now. Wade Cox's bill of 9420 will apply reasonable restrictions as to where hemp can be grown and make industrial hemp facilities subject to special exception process. Baltimore County must enact Bill 9420 to protect all of its constituents from the ill effects of hemp.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Darren O'Brien.
Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
Oh, well, thank you, everyone. Uh, Madam Chair and distinguished members in the audience. Uh, my name is Darren O'Brien. Obviously, I'm a far, I'm a hemp farmer. Um, uh, we can't pretend this is a new crop. It's been grown in Canada uh for over four, I think, five decades. And if you look at the research and facts, you're not gonna find, and no one has seen this. I mean, in the U.S., we're starting to grow it. It's now permitted. And we would know, we would have known, and the federal government would have known by now, that by planting the crop, that there were hazardous concerns. That's not so. The West Coast. Let's look at the West Coast also as an example. So as it was pointed out, the federal government is deeply involved and they actually hold several patents. University of Maryland and Harvard are now working meticulously to refine the health benefits and issue patents and apply for patents. The drug, the hemp plant, um, my entire family's been involved. I live in the community. I'm not gonna tell anyone now because I'm afraid the neighbors will get upset for unknown reasons with no factual basis. Um, so my children, my neighbors, no one, no one has complained. No one has health issues from it. In fact, it's the opposite in the scientific community. Again, Harvard, Maryland, major medical institutions are changing toward the science of the endocannabinoid system. The U.S. Department holds, the Health Department holds patents. It's a significant plant and it's really the education. And I would say that during this meeting next week that you're having, Mr. Hatch, ask any of those individuals if they know anything about the science of their body and the endocannabinoid system or the central nervous system. Again, we're looking at approximately 2% of the farms that are farming it in Maryland. And if you use that test alone, no one would consider it. It, 2%, and let's give it 5% of the community complaining about a farm, which they have moved into the area and built their homes or purchased their homes in a state that has a right to farm. And this is an agricultural crop and it is protected. So um, there's no difference.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Your two minutes are up. Can you wrap up your sentence, please?
Well, I just think that we need to look at the factual basis of the claims. Not just the community comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Facts matter.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Dennis Stevens.
Okay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair and uh council members. Thank you for, for the, my time to uh, I am, I'm from Louisville, Kentucky. Uh, started growing hemp on the campus of University of Louisville um for uh study. We actually did this among uh the students. Um, at the beginning, we were within just a few feet of where the students would walk. Uh, we really never had any, any issue. Um, and now consult on several thousand acres. Um, there are several times where I may be in an area that can consume up to 1,500 acres at a time. Uh, I, I'm, I, I will acknowledge that there is uh, uh, terpenes that get released. Um, that is a natural thing from the plant. Um, the same thing happens with Christmas trees. So um, knowing that, um, we have never experienced or ever been around doing one. I'm asthmatic. Um, I've never had any issues um where the plant has affected me in any way. Um, and I, I'm just trying to, to give my, my point of view from where I've been growing it um and will continue growing it in, in agriculture throughout the country. And I've actually got to work with some of your growers in your area to actually help them be successful in what they're doing. Um, and unless I have any questions, um, I, I do know that. Yes, and, and just to acknowledge that, uh, again, the, the, the period of time in which you're really getting this, the, the release is just a short period of time. Um, it's just like with any other crop. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, our next speaker is Jefferson Lee. I'm Mr. Lee. There. Mr. Lee?
Yes, hi. Um, thank you very much for this opportunity. Uh, my name is Jefferson Lee. Uh, I'm a father of young children and I am a physician. And I, I agree with uh, with what was mentioned earlier. Facts do matter. And I think it's interesting that the facts being promulgated by folks with, with obviously a commercial interest in cannabis are very different from the facts being dealt out by the U.S. government. Um, I will cite the U.S. FDA, the Food and Drug Administration explicitly states on their website that pregnant women and breastfeeding mothers should not get exposed to cannabis or cannabis-derived products. Uh, there is no conflation here. This is not referring to medical marijuana. This is anything that is cannabis-based, of which industrial hemp is part of it. Uh, CBD is one such chemical. It is known, and this is known, facts do matter, that it can cause liver damage, neurologic changes, and interactions with other medications. So the FDA states with regards to pregnant women and breastfeeding mothers, quote, "There is significant cause for concern," unquote, "with child development." Uh, so these, these recommendations are very concerning to me as a physician and certainly as a father. It is incredibly disturbing. Uh, the idea of my young children becoming guinea pigs for future research on long-term health hazards of cannabis exposure at home. That's not something I would ever want, and I don't think any parent would ever want this. My only interest here is not commercial. It is simply to be a dad, to be a citizen and to live here peacefully and without having fear of my children being exposed to this. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our last speaker for Bill 9420.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna move on to page 19, and that is Bill 95 dash 20. Uh, Mr. Patoka, Councilman Patoka, before we begin, I understand that we have some non-English speaking uh folks signed up to testify. And we do have a translator for those folks.
If that's the case, Carlos Gonzalez, uh, one of my legislative aides, is on, he's, he will be able to translate. I think he's on the phone, though.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, um, I get that, I wish we would have known that in advance. We could have had that write their testimony and then had somebody translate it. Uh, so this will be two minutes for testimony, two minutes for translation?
Well, there also may be um Gabby, uh, who is, I think, a speaker, may be able to translate as well.
Okay.
That is correct. That is correct, Councilman. Um, I was given her name and yes.
And we do know who those speakers are, right, Chris? So we, we do know?
I do not know which speakers on the list um do not, um, are not English-speaking. Um.
Alrighty. We just leave anybody out. Okay.
Okay.
So Ms. Councilman Patoka, I'm sure you have a few things to say about 9520.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and uh colleagues, we, we have acted on some really difficult issues uh over the past year. 2020's been a tough year. We faced uh four crises. Uh, we faced a health crisis in COVID. Uh, we faced an economic crisis related to COVID. We're facing police reform, um, which has um been presented to us in a way that we've never seen before. Uh, and we're also facing global warming. These are things that uh our nation is, is working on and we as a council are working on at the local, local level. I put global warming in there because we just finished up the CZMP and I'm confident that the decisions we made were good for the environment. We, uh, and the budget we passed, we created a sustainability office. So these are things we can do at the local level to address some of these larger issues. And uh certainly police reform, we're gonna hear a little bit more on that later in this meeting. So the issue I'm bringing forward today relates to an economic and health crisis. And uh so Bill 9520 enacts some rental protections for residential tenants during emergencies. And I want to talk about the time and circumstance related to that. And uh it mostly relates to rental increases. So I wanna, I want that to be clear, that it's mostly related to increases. Uh, so I'll talk about time and circumstance and I'll talk about substance. So in terms of the time and circumstance, this bill would, would go into effect under four conditions. One condition is if the governor declares a state of the emergency or catastrophic public health emergency lasting at least 30 days and effective either statewide or in Baltimore County. Secondly, a national or statewide eviction moratorium that lasts for more than 30 days. Third, and this is the economic crisis, two consecutive months where Maryland's unemployment rate is at or above 10%. And fourth and last is a catastrophic health emergency declared by the governor for COVID-19 on March 5th, 2020, as, and as extended by the governor. So during this period uh where, where the governor extends it and also as Mr. Benjamin comes in and does a, a parallel extension for the county executive. Um, so those are the circumstances when this bill would be in play. So what would be in play? Uh, the bill, if one of these circumstances occurs, then this bill would require landlord to give a tenant 30 days' written notice of an increase in rent before charging the increase. And that notice must be posted on the property and mailed to the tenant and uh during the emergency. And for an additional 180 days after the end, a landlord must also give the tenant a written notice 60 days before charging a rent increase. And the reason for that 180 days is because when the economic crisis ends and you've lost your job, doesn't mean you immediately get a job. It allows for time uh for somebody to uh kind of get their families, and this is all about families, to get their family circumstances back in order. Um, a landlord that doesn't give appropriate notices may not bring a complaint for non-payment of rent on the basis of unpaid rent increases or late fees, increases or late fees. During an emergency, a landlord must give tenants written notice of any federal, state, or local programs that provide direct or financial assistance for rental or housing costs, similar to what we heard from Mr. Gutwold today from the Planning Department. The notice must be given within 14 days of the state of emergency or the announcement of the qualifying program. The bill limits a landlord from imposing more than one rent increase in any 12-month period. So one per year during an emergency and for 180 days uh after it's over, after it ends. A landlord may only increase a tenant's rent by the regional inflation rate for residential rent. And I'm gonna talk a bit about that in a moment. Uh, a rent increase going to, into effect during an emergency is automatically limited to this amount. And uh to obtain a judgment for non-payment of rent during an emergency and one year after it's end, a land, your landlord must produce records showing that they have charged increased rent above this amount. So what is this um, this regional rate that I just mentioned? It's really based on Consumer Price Index for urban consumers for the Baltimore, Columbia, and Towson area, which is the Maryland uh state statistical area, the CBSA. And currently, the CBSA that, that, I'm sorry, that uh index, that can, that CPI is 2.07%. So that's what we're talking about. An increase of 2.07% is, would be the limit during one of these circumstances. So during the emergency and for 180 days after it's end, a landlord may not charge tenant late fees, court fees, or payment of processing fees to obtain a judgment for non-payment of rent during an emergency and for one year after it's end, a landlord must produce records showing that they have not charged such fees. Also during an emergency and for 180 days after it's end, a landlord may not report to a credit bureau any delinquency or other derogatory uh information about the tenant. This is particularly important because that credit report will follow this family member. And remember, we're talking about families here in Baltimore County. Will follow that family member throughout their uh credit life and um it will be difficult for them to do the things they need to do for their families. The bill adds uh to the grounds for denying, suspending, or revoking landlords. The bill adds to the grounds for denying, suspending, or revoking landlords' rental license for failing to comply with the requirements of this bill. And a landlord applying for rental license must agree in writing to adhere to these requirements before a rental license may be issued. Lastly, and I know that everyone's pleased that I got to the last point I'm going to make, the bill requires that the Department of Health and PAI and the Office of Housing to publish information about these requirements. Let me also just say that I want to thank Mr. Benjamin. He has provided some insight on this, and so there'll be some amendments on this based on the information he got from Mr. Benjamin. I also want to thank the Maryland Multi-Housing Association because they've provided some input, and I suspect that there'll be some amendments related to the input that that organization has provided. And finally, I just want to thank all the advocates that brought this issue forward. So, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, fellow members of the council.
You're welcome, Councilman. Do any of the members have any questions or comments for Councilman Batoka? I have a question. I'm going to play devil's advocate here for a second, if you'll indulge me. So, we all know, we are all very aware of how COVID has affected so many people in so many ways since, I'm going to say it's affected my family since February, but for most, March. So, at least for a good solid six months, we've seen unemployment rate going up. We see the amount of food that's been distributed from Baltimore County, the families that need it. I know that Dr. Branch is working very hard over in the Department of Social Services to make sure that people are getting their food stamp cards and any kind of emergency funding. The county executive, you know, already has things in place, and the governor. So, my question is to you, what makes the difference between an unforeseen experience, you know, a family that has been really hit by COVID and they're out of work, or something unforeseen by a family that's uncoordinated, like an illness of a child or illness of a spouse, or just circumstances beyond their control like COVID?
So, that's a very good question. The reason this is specific to these crises, and you broke up for a second, so I may not have heard the entire question, is that the profound impact of this virus is different than anything that we have seen in generations. And, you know, this is...
I understand that. I'm not arguing that fact at all. What I'm trying to understand is through the years, whether it was my own personal experiences or what I've experienced through working in government or as an elected official, there are so many people, let's take, for instance, a child is diagnosed with cancer, and the mother has to quit work to take care of that child and be at the hospital. They lose their home. They then go into a rental. They lose their car because of the medical bills or whatever. I mean, there's so many situations out there that families go through. What is the difference between someone like that that cannot pay their rent, okay? They're in an apartment, they have no money to pay their rent, or a family that is really being devastated by the COVID virus and they're out of work? What I'm trying to say is, how do we defend helping one group of people when we aren't able to help, except through what we're already doing, like through social services and things like that? We don't say you don't have to pay your rent for the next 180 days, right? We don't say, "We're not going to raise your rent." People suffer under, you know, different circumstances. So, in my mind, I just want to understand, and I get the COVID, but how could this not pertain to so many other people that have lost their apartments, you know, lost their homes, rather, and, you know, have been misplaced and don't have a place to live because it was unforeseen, just like COVID is? And their issue has been so damaging to them financially, just like COVID has? So, I'm just trying to understand how to explain that to people that are really having similar life experiences but for different reasons, and we're acting one way to one group of people and not to another. And as government, I'm trying to understand, I remember when this started, and I remember the first time I tried to order, and you probably had this experience too, the first time we tried to order hand sanitizer, and all of a sudden, it was $19 for a bottle this big. Well, we, as a government, couldn't go online or go into Walmart or go into Target or any grocery store and say, "Hey, wait a minute. We're county government. You can't do that. You can't gouge people now. They need hand sanitizer. This is so important for families to have." We can't do that. We can't go into private sector and like tell them what to charge or to tell them to bring their prices down. So, how are we doing it? How does this legislation explain to people that are in the rental business where they have a ton, whether they have a ton of units or four units, that we are now going to tell them how to do business in a private sector?
Well, I would go back to the profound nature of this particular economic and health crisis, and I would also not just say the profoundness of it, but the magnitude of it, the widespread nature of it. And other jurisdictions are doing it as well. And so, for me, I feel it as an obligation right here in my heart, Madam Chair, to help the families in the Second District, and I hope that my fellow colleagues can feel that as well. If this were not a COVID period in the Second District, there are organizations that I would make referrals to if there were families that came to me and said, "Hey, we can't pay our rent." And again, we're not talking about the payment of rent. We are talking about rental increases during this time. So, and again, we've taken action where we aren't allowing evictions. So, we can, as a government with a big heart and a governing body with a big heart, and I know that each of you do have a level of compassion and empathy for, otherwise, you wouldn't have run for these jobs. We all have done this because we have compassion and empathy, and that's why I'm bringing it forward, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm just trying to, I want to have an understanding and be able to explain to some of my constituents, I won't name this person, but they have 20,000 units that they rent and oversee in Baltimore County and one other county. And when the 600 hours additional unemployment came out, I believe, in May, they had called me and said, "Look, I just want you to know something. Like, I got 25% of my people not paying rent." And I really feel like I have a quality apartment complex for the hard-working people, which we call the working poor, if you're making under $15 an hour and trying to, you know, provide for your family. And they say, you know, they always pay their rent on time. Now, they're getting their unemployment, they're getting the $600 additional, they got a stimulus check, and guess what? They're not paying their rent because the governor's saying they might have to. Fair is that to me, and now I can't evict them. And so, I listen to that, too, and I'm thinking, why would somebody getting that not pay their rent if they have the ability to? And it doesn't sound like that's just one out of every hundred, because I talked to, after I had that conversation, I talked to other apartment complex owners, and they told me the same thing, that they absolutely know they're getting unemployment and getting the, just the $600 a week was $2,400 a month. These rents were like 900 to 1,000 to 1,100. They were paying them, making $15 an hour, but now they're not paying. So, I know, I don't know if you're aware of that or not. So, that's kind of disheartening for the people that are struggling so badly, who may not be getting anything because of the type of the work that they had been doing for years, whether they were folks to clean the inside of folks' homes, or in the service industry where a lot of their pay was not really taxed because, you know, it was tips and things like that. So, I just want to, and look, I've got a big heart. I, you know, have worked with people of lower income and with the folks at Prolog and the homeless, and I get all that, but I just want to be able to put this in a way that makes everybody understand it, you know? And I agree that we shouldn't be, I don't think once somebody is so far behind, we should then put more fees on top of it, because then you never get out of that hole. Never ever can you get out of that hole. It's like having a credit card with 24%. You know, you never, you only, you never catch the principal, right? It's the same thing. So, I do agree with that, and I think that there can be a compromise with the apartment folks and something like that, because I think that is a decent thing to do, you know, to not add those additional fees, for sure. I don't know about, explain to me how we explain you don't raise their rent if they're, let's just say, this month is the month that they would be renewing their lease for a year, right? And we know that most of the time when people do that, there's a rent increase. I think most rents are capped off at a certain amount, let's say it's 1% or 2%. How do we get involved in something like that when it's contractual?
Well, I think that during this, these four circumstances, that we would regulate that during that period and 180 days to follow, that you cannot raise. We're not asking them not to collect rent. We're just asking them not to raise the rent consistent with the CPI.
And how about for the six months after the state of emergency? That's a long time. I mean, are you willing to compromise on that at all?
Certainly. I've heard, you know, that's what we're all about. And I talked to the advocates, and I talked to the MMH, and I shared the same sentiment that I'm looking for the sweet spot that helps satisfy both organizations. And I think that we, as a collective body, will be able to find that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members who have any questions or comments for the Councilman before we go with the speakers? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Phil Castro, would you start with the speakers?
Madam Chair, Councilman Crandall.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I was toggling my mute button here.
I was wondering why nobody had anything to say.
Well, I have some concerns about this bill, and one in particular is, I think, you know, Councilwoman Bevins, you mentioned a large apartment complex owner in Baltimore County, but I have concerns about the effect on the investment property type of folks that have buy an extra house, have the wherewithal to do that, but they have to take out a mortgage on it, and they're getting a little bit of income out of their rent. They may own one or two rental properties in Baltimore County. This bill puts a lot of burden on those folks, and it doesn't, I don't think it takes into account the fact that their mortgage needs to be paid, and we wouldn't be allowed to, and this bill does not address the fact that these folks are not getting mortgage assistance. So, I think it's, you know, my concern is that we're meddling in the personal finances of a lot of different people, and I just don't believe that that's where government should be going. And I'm not heartless, but I am looking out for the unintended consequences of who may be hurt by this bill. I also have concerns about the requirements of taking a smaller landlord who probably does not have staff or accountants or attorneys advising them. They have to, under this bill, they would, to provide that notification on the various programs that might be out there. I know some landlords might be very proactive, others, they don't have the wherewithal to go in and look at all these available programs and make sure that their tenants. I think it's an unfair responsibility to place on them, again, to place on these smaller landlords. So, those are just two of my major concerns, and, Councilman, if you want to, you know, address those, I didn't really ask you any questions. I just sort of articulated a couple of major concerns that I have with this bill.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Crandall. I have been in discussion with Adam Phillips, who helped me draft the legislation, about smaller landlords and how we can tweak this to not be overly burdensome to that group. And also, we're looking at notifications as well and how that might be manageable of those programs.
Councilman Crandall, did you have anything else?
I'm good, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Izzy.
You're welcome, Councilman Todd.
Councilman, did you have a question? Councilman Quirk, did you have a question or comment?
I mean, I share Councilman Crandall's concerns. I mean, there's a lot of landlords out there, and in a sense, this bill almost assumes that renters are in worse condition than some of these landlords. And, you know, there's a lot of real estate investment trusts, for example, that are really hemorrhaging money right now. There's a lot of mom-and-pop small landlords that don't have it easy. A lot of times, they need the rental income just to pay their bills as well, so it's not like the landlords are, you know, just flush with money. And so, it's something that I definitely can understand Councilman Crandall's concerns, and I think we have to be careful not to get too much into private business, because then if we're doing this for landlords and renters, then what other businesses as well are we going to now try to put more government regulation and intervention in? So, I have some concerns.
Councilman Batoka, would this be a fair statement to say that this is just not going to apply during the times of COVID, that there are other times, like states of emergency and over 10% unemployment, that would stay in effect?
Yes. So, it says one or more of these four specific events. So, 10% unemployment is very, very high. It's abnormally high. And so, 60 days of consecutive 10% or more unemployment is, I would define as crisis.
Okay. Any other council members have any questions for Councilman Batoka?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. I echo the comments of my colleagues. Councilman Batoka, you have a big heart, and I know you're always looking to help people, as we all are. And I apologize if this has been addressed. We had a power outage here at the courthouse. But the issue of retroactivity, most legislation that we put forward is prospective, and I know that there's some concerns about this being illegal. Could you just address that, and if you're willing to amend the bill?
Thank you, Councilman Marks. So, just to let you know, that was not asked during the outage, so it's a new question, and it is something, we're looking at it. I know that MMH had some, MMA, I'm sorry, had some issues about the, I think it was related to the constitutionality of that. And so, I'll huddle up with Adam and see how we might be able to tweak that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other council members?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
I guess I had another question. I think everybody had some very good comments. Would a person have to demonstrate, I mean, from what I understand, this is a broad brush, right? So, if we're talking state of emergency, would a person have to demonstrate that they were negatively affected by COVID? Or, I'm assuming this bill would cover everyone, even if a person didn't have a problem paying their rent and were not affected by COVID? Is that right?
During these circumstances, remember, you just can't raise the rent. So, yes, even if a person was not negatively affected.
That doesn't seem fair. Somebody isn't unemployed, and they are still working, and they are, they do have the ability to pay their rent, they can't raise their rent as well?
I think the, we're talking about apples and oranges here. We're not evaluating every renter and seeing what their financial worth is. We know that... and saying what their financial worth is we we know that we know that people are suffering right now and so to address that suffering we're asking this small ask just please do not raise the rent and the other big thing that is for me is I feel like a non-negotiable is the credit component of it of because that follows somebody so long and it's so hard to bring your credit up and during one of these four areas of crisis we're not talking about like a blip we're talking about outright national international crisis and during that period that's when this would go into effect but we're not evaluating each family's worth
well but that's not fair I mean if somebody has the ability to pay their rent and they haven't had a hiccup let's say both couples are working and they haven't had a hiccup at all like we're still working right and and you're getting a paycheck I'm getting a paycheck we are very very blessed that we have that so why would I take advantage of that and say oh okay I'm just not gonna raise my rent I don't think that's that's fair let those who can pay pay
they are paying their rent we're just asking landlords not to increase
no I'm just saying if their lease is to be renewed during this and they have the ability their landlords know who they are they know if they're working or not working you know they have the ability to still pay don't you think they should still pay
they can increase it up to the 2.07% which is the consumer price index for all consumers
okay anyone else councilman Jones were you done I guess he was
yes madam chair
okay are there any more questions or comments for councilman Batoka okay we're gonna move we're gonna move on to the speakers that have been patiently waiting on the phone Ms Phil Castro first speaker please
chair is Aaron Greenfield Mr Greenfield
yes good evening madam chair members of housing association we're a statewide trade association whose members consist of owners and property managers large and small who own or manage over 78,000 units and 282 apartment communities in Baltimore County alone we have supported with amendments all other rent stabilization bills in the state unfortunately this is a bill we have to oppose there is a simpler way to achieve councilman Patoka's objective this fault bill goes above and beyond any other ordinance we've seen in terms of its notice provisions its definition of emergency I could go on and on let me in fact work through some of the bullet points you have our written submission the bill's retroactive application meaning that since the bill would be effective as of March 5th 2020 any rent increase which was agreed upon or which went into effect since that date would now be illegal we believe this is an unconstitutional deprivation of a property whose contract rights in fact multiple property owners are now challenging a similar provision in the US District Court of Maryland that the city of Baltimore Howard County and the city of Salisbury legislated passage of this bill with that provision will likely result in an amended lawsuit to bring in Baltimore County as well the expansion nature of the definition of emergency not only leads to ambiguity but the concept that it could be defined by the always volatile unemployment rate leaves no guidance or certainty for property owners of courts and tenants to know when an emergency ends or begins and in fact it's not just two months let's assume the emergency in this case was just two months 60 days it's two months plus 180 days which residential housing provider would be under this this construct the bill also has certain notice provisions that are again unlike anything we've seen before requiring landlords to present their rent increases through public notices and post them on the doors in addition to sending them by certified mail this can lead to a myriad of contentious issues between fellow tenants as well as with the landlord
could you wrap up your comments your two minutes are up
yes I will wrap up we respect oppose this legislation Ms Howard will be following me with additional points thank you very much
madam chair next speaker Andrew Miller Mr Miller
can you hear me
yes you may begin your testimony
thank you good afternoon madam chair members of the council my name is Andrew Miller I'm a resident of the second district represented by councilman Patoka and I'm here to testify on behalf of Jews United for Justice in support of the tenant protections during emergencies bill Jewish tradition teaches that landlords may not evict tenants without notice may not evict tenants when housing is hard to find or environmental conditions are dangerous and may not raise the rent as a means to evicting tenants these concerns are relevant to the current situation we face in Baltimore County and in Maryland we already had an affordable housing crisis before covid-19 and this is a failure of of government at the national and state level over many decades now we're facing a full-blown emergency this is worse than the 2008 2009 it's the worst economic downturn since today's Great Depression everybody knows this many people who lost their jobs this spring are still unemployed estimates as of late July were that nearly 300,000 Maryland residents were at risk of being evicted once the terms of the CARES Act expired people are no longer getting those checks and neither Governor Hogan's executive order nor the CDC eviction moratorium really provide protection from eviction that is so urgently needed in the midst of the pandemic and economic emergency we're facing we know that throwing families out on the street in the midst of a pandemic not only is inhumane but also risks the health of many thousands of others and that's one thing that's different in this crisis I can't speak to the others but certainly in this crisis council Patoka's bill would provide protections for residential tenants during emergencies including requiring landlords to give notice of rent increases providing restrictions on residential rent increases as you heard on collecting fees and interest requiring notices or rental assistance programs and set certain requirements to obtain a rental housing license and add other grounds for denial suspension or revocation the failure of the federal government to enact sufficient protections during a national crisis has left no alternative for local government to act in any way that is within its power for all these reasons I urge the members of this council to enact this bill into law thank you
madam chair so in Mr Miller speaking a light bulb went off so timing people it's if the timer was in front of me instead of behind me but now for all the attendees who are testifying you can see the camera it might be I mean the timer it might be backwards but you can see when you're running out of time that way I don't have to interrupt you
it's not backwards to us
oh it's not it is to me
good spark I like it when we get sparks like that exactly
well done Ms Phil Castro I taught her everything she knows
so I came up with this lovely idea um our next speaker is Catherine Howard second I gotta down to the keys here Ms Howard Ms Howard
yes good thank you can you all can you all hear me
yes we can
great thank you very much yes hi I'm Kathy Howard I work with Regional Management Inc and I'm a volunteer with the Maryland Multi-Housing Association as their legislative co-chair I echo everything that Mr Greenfield has said prior to this but want to add to a little bit as well some points that he did not was not able to cover the resource notice that is required in this bill is a very problematic situation landlord is not going to know how all of the resources that are available they are ever changing they are always different you know from the smallest church charity to the largest societal group is a it you just can't keep up with all of it that would potentially cause the landlord to have a violation of this law and that is just not a good idea the second thing is is that I believe we're encouraging invading into court procedure by saying that you cannot go into a failure to pay rent case in district court district court sets those rules they're supposed to be uniform throughout the state and I believe that this would be an incursion into that looking to carve out Baltimore County last but not least this the CPI standard as the index I believe may be unconstitutional because it belies the 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 effect of market forces on the setting of rates for rent and that will involve an incursion into contract rights and market rate contract rights with tenants I think Mr Greenfield covered everything we I think our written materials have also covered everything and I think a lot of the questions that I've heard from the council indicates that there is a there is and should be a simpler way to do this and help these help these folks out which I would suggest that you could look at several other counties but particularly would recommend Anarundel County that did put together a very forthright bill forthright and very simple bill which we were in support of thank you for letting me talk
madam chair
yes
speaker is Ariel Juberg
yes
hi you may begin your testimony
thank you good evening madam chair and members of the council my name is Ariel Juberg and I am speaking in support bill 9520 I am part of a small church in Baltimore County this spring our services were halted only to begin again with masks our bulletins have been filled with news about parishioners who are sick and prayers for healthcare workers the columns previously describing upcoming potlucks are now filled with information about the nearest food banks I'm worried about my fellow parishioners and neighbors who rent in Baltimore County many have lost their jobs had their hours cut or have gone through their savings bill 9520 is common sense legislation that we need in order to stabilize our communities it protects tenants from late fees and unreasonable increases in rent during defined stages of emergency contrary to some statements made tonight this bill does not release renters from the obligation of paying the rent in fact by avoiding senseless late fees it helps them to make their original payments this is especially important for smaller landlords I told you that I belong to a church in Baltimore County I am also on the administrative council of this church my church rents out of property and would be considered a landlord under this legislation I personally support this legislation from a landlord's perspective according to the most recent American Community Survey 33% of Baltimore County homes were renter occupied as a person of faith I follow an itinerant carpenter my faith leads me to incline my ear to the renter rather than the owner of 20,000 units in Baltimore County I hope that you will consider the needs of families in Baltimore County and support bill 9520 thank you
next speaker please our next speaker is Bridge Dumay and let me find
hello hi madam chair and members of the county council thank you so much my name is Bridge Dumay I'm a political organizer with 1199 we represent 2,000 healthcare workers in Baltimore County alone most of whom are renters and I'm testifying on their behalf in strong support of this bill to codify tenant protections during emergencies and I urge the council to vote yes this bill is an important step towards making sure that people can stay housed and not accumulate massive amounts of debt during the covid-19 pandemic and the employment crisis it has caused as healthcare workers who are at higher risk of contracting covid-19 due to the nature of their work our members know all too well that one of the most effective ways to slow the spread of this highly contagious virus is to simply stay home of course this rent relief bill benefits working people but it also benefits the public as a whole because covid-19 doesn't care if you're a council member a homeowner a landlord or a tenant it only cares that you are human we are all susceptible and when more people are unhoused and unable to afford healthcare due to other bills piling up the virus spreads more easily this bill does not cancel rent and it does not prevent landlords from collecting rent owed it simply pauses the collection of late fees until the economic crisis is resolved it needs to be easy for people to pay their rent on time and to pay back the money they owe late fees are a barrier to making sure balances owed can be paid in full in a more timely manner tenants want to pay their rent landlords want to collect their rent this bill will make it easier for that to happen for the sake of public health and economic recovery it's in the best interests of everyone to pass this bill and I would just like to address the point that was brought up about people who haven't been impacted by covid not needing this just because they haven't yet doesn't mean they won't they could still get sick and have to take time off work not be able to pay their bills and they can still lose their jobs so we need these protections for everyone vote yes thank you
hey Bridget
yes ma'am
this is councilwoman Bevins I just wanted to ask you a quick question I know that there was a text sent around yesterday and I believe by your organization on on sending it to people and ask them to vote one way or the other or you know tune into this
my organization only texts our members who have signed up to receive text messages
correct I just want you to know that you put Ms Phil Castro the woman on the screen her personal cell phone number on that text
um okay this was I'm not sure which text you're referring to but we did not send out a phone number in the text message we did to our members so I just want to clarify that our organization only texts our members
okay it said 1199 and had your logo on it so I was asked that's why I was asking
we have a petition for people to sign but that doesn't mean that we were the ones sending out the petition and I apologize to the sorry the woman whose phone number was put out there the personal number but again that was the responsibility of 1199 and that's not something that we that we put together
okay thank you appreciate it next speaker please
our next speaker madam chair is Melissa Battaker I'm terrible with these names bear with me
you got it correct everyone my name is Melissa Battaker I am a resident of District 8 I've lived in Parkville for seven years and I'm here to testify in favor of bill 9520 for the reasons to protect working people who are also renters and also to ensure that landlords are able to continue to receive the income that they need to pay their own bills I want to speak to the point about the burden of notification I understand that this can be a burden on landlords however in contrast in order for people to justify that needing support like this that can be tremendously burdensome on working people who are just trying to get by who may work multiple jobs and also in many in many cases things like this are inaccessible so for example when Baltimore County committed $1 million in rent relief funds there was a very short application window it was only available in English and online and required tremendous documentation so I think about a burden that would be as opposed to simply having to publicly state a potential rent increase again I just want to reiterate what folks have said before that renters will continue to pay their rent and in fact more likely guarantee that they will be able to pay their rent as opposed to paying exorbitant fees and to close I just want to this is this comes back to what councilwoman Bevins was saying about coming from my heart this does come from my heart I think about the effects of working people who get evicted I'm a former teacher the effect of that on children is detrimental to their learning and beyond families have to be sheltered and we have to make it easy for them to do it during a pandemic or other emergency
thank you next speaker please
madam chair next speaker is Daryl Yoder Mr Yoder
good evening I'm a resident of Catonsville and a former landlord myself for those of us who have jobs where working from home makes sense it really feels like this economic crash has been minor and is pretty much over already but for those for whom that is not an option and who depend on being able to go out into the community to provide services that is very much not the case that is very much not the case. And if you have been at a food distribution point recently, you've seen the long lines of people who are still struggling to make basic ends meet. To hope families like this continue to pay their rent, which is in their interest and in landlord's interest, seems like a basic matter of decency in our community. No one is served by housing instability. This bill does not cancel anyone's responsibility to pay rent, but by limiting rent increases and fees, it makes it more likely that bills will still be paid, and people don't have to pick and choose what they can afford and what they have to let go. There's a hierarchy of needs here, and from my perspective, I hope that the highest priority of our council and our county, it certainly is my highest priority, is that our most vulnerable neighbors are looked after when the economy collapses under them through no fault of their own. I want to be part of a community which is compassionate towards our neighbors, and especially when they're in need. That is when compassion counts. And I hope that I can say that is true of Baltimore County as a whole, and I hope that the council will join me in prioritizing that. I strongly, strongly support this bill, and I hope that you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Gabby Gabriella Roque. Ms. Roque.
Hi, everyone. Hello, Councilwoman Chair. Hello, council members. First, I want to thank Izzy Petoka for his leadership and for presenting this legislation on behalf of our community. My name is Gabriella Roque. I am a lead organizer with CASA. I'm here testifying on behalf of our members, many of who live in your districts. As you've heard, well, as you will hear through their own testimony, these are financially uncertain times for many working families. There are many people in our community whose only income is what they earn through their labor, through being on the front lines of this pandemic. Many of our members have already gotten sick and during that time, lost weeks or more worth of incomes, sometimes losing their job entirely for failing to show up. People understand that everything is on the line if they do not pay rent, their shelter, their health, their stability, the education of their children. It is in the best interest of everyone to keep their tenants housed. And the legislation proposed by Izzy Petoka does exactly that. It is modest protections during certain times of instability, of state of emergency. And I'm also very surprised to hear some members of the Housing Association here say that it has been so difficult, it could be so difficult, for their members to find this information. When I go to their website, I see lists upon lists of different rent relief programs all throughout Maryland. So I think your association is doing a great job of keeping your members informed about the rent relief programs that are out there and that are available. I also think that it seems pretty easy for landlords to write all kinds of notices. There has been no shortage of notices, even fake notices of evictions, ones that simply remind you that they can evict you. So if landlords are able to produce these kinds of documentation and notices, that they still have the probability, they still have the power to evict you, I think that it doesn't turn over burden for administration to also put notices that could actually be productive and help those tenants pay the rent that they owe. Thank you. Please vote yes on this legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Ms. Roque, just stand by. So I know that you're translating, so at that time, when I have those speakers, I will unmute you as well. Okay?
Happy to do so, and I appreciate the council being so accommodating.
Our pleasure. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Carrie Ann Murray. Ms. Murray.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Ann Murray. I am testifying tonight in support of Bill 9520. I want to thank Councilwoman Petoka for bringing this bill forward and for recognizing the need to protect vulnerable communities in our county. I feel strongly this legislation should be passed. It enables the county to put in place basic protections for renters that are common sense. I believe that at a time like this, when we're experiencing a global pandemic and a national emergency, we need to take action to protect those who are most critically impacted by what is happening. This bill is about enabling renters to pay their rent and ensuring that the landlords continue to receive revenue. Nowhere in this bill is there any indication that renters should not pay their rents. This bill does indicate that rent increases and late fees should not be implemented during a state of emergency such as the current unprecedented pandemic we're experiencing. I don't believe that now is a time when rent should be raised and late fees imposed, particularly when working families are finding themselves unable to pay bills through absolutely no fault of their own. We want to help working families to be able to pay their rent. Late fees and rent increases do not help this, and this bill is about facilitating common sense legislation to protect renters. I've heard really good discussion tonight. I hope that all of us who are here tonight can work together to protect vulnerable communities and to pass this bill. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Danielle Gorney. I'm sorry, Daniel Gorney.
Are you there?
Mr. Gorney? I'm trying to unmute him. Let me, Mr. Gorney, let me unmute your microphone. Mr. Gorney?
Yes, hello.
Okay, we can hear you, but I feel like you're having some connection problem. Mr. Gorney? Try unmuting him again.
Hello?
Hello, are you there?
Is this clear?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Daniel Gorney. I am a resident of County District Five, and I am in favor of Bill 9520. Federal data from the American Community Survey indicated that forty-one percent of county renters were considered cost burdened as defined by the Federal Housing Administration guidelines. This means that forty-one percent of all county residents, all county renters, were paying a larger portion of their income and housing costs than is advisable before the pandemic hit. With job losses and hour reductions, the percentage of income going towards housing costs is only going up, even if rent is held constant. By my reading of this bill, it applies to all residential structures regardless of how many units are in the structure. It does not exempt anyone from paying rent on time and in full. It comes into effect only during an emergency, and even then only limits the rate of rent increase during that emergency to the local rate of inflation as defined by the Consumer Price Index. Renters would not have expected to be paying late fees, and landlords would not have expected to be collecting them at the outset of a lease agreement. Imposing penalties and fees on tenants already struggling to make rent is trying to draw water from a dry well and serves no one's interests. The tenant is pushed further into debt, and the landlord still does not get paid. The bill is not government rent control, but is comparable to price gouging laws used in thirty-five other states to ensure affordable groceries are available during the aftermath of a natural disaster. Passage of this bill would give tenants time to get back on their feet and continue making rent payments while preventing the need for this kind of debate during the next crisis. If the council would like to extend assistance to landlords as well, that would be a noble goal, but standing back and allowing mass defaults on leases would be irresponsible. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Michelle Correa, and she does need Ms. Roque's assistance, so bear with me one moment. Ms. Roque, Ms. Roque, are you on?
I'm here. I'm ready.
Okay, let me get to Michelle. I don't see her on our attendee list. Michelle, estás ahí? No, I do not see her. She, if she is logged on, she may be by phone. So let me go to Isabel Aguilar. I'm sorry, I'll scroll through this. Well, I have an unfortunate technical problem on the unmute, and they're both unmuted. Ms. Roque, you're both unmuted. I'm going to start the timer. Do you want to?
Chris, just FYI, I think because, I think the chair indicated that because there's a speaker and then a translation, I think we were going to allow more time for that.
Yes, that's correct. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to, instead, it's faster for me just to run the timer twice than to change the time in between the other speakers.
Okay.
Just to clarify. Ms. Roque?
No, I'm unmuted.
Okay, give me one second. Let me make sure Ms. Aguilar is also unmuted.
Thank you.
Ms. Aguilar?
Hello?
Yes. Ms. Roque, are you both there?
Yes.
Hi. I will try to speak in English. It's not too very good, but I will try, okay?
Well, we do have Ms. Roque here to translate.
Okay, like you prefer. Okay, voy in English. Hello, members of council. My name is Isabel Aguilar. I live the last fifty years living in Awes Mill in Baltimore County. I am a mother of three children. The three are school age. Right now, I'm home looking my children. Time my job was suspended. We don't have certainty when we return because my work was waiting for it, waiting planner, and in the last two months that my husband returned to work, signed all this stuff, we only have seven hundred a week to cover the rent and pay the bills. My children are citizens, but they don't receive any type of financial aid, no food assistance, no the financial every child receives, anything. My family was positive with COVID, that June, in part that July. And we have lived two terrible months without the support of more friends with some food. Or we have a saving, but it was enough to cover the rent. We pay in late loans, but we had to pay interest for this loan. The next month, in October, we had to renew the rental contract, and this implied we will have an increase for the pay. And we asking, please support this bill nineteen five twenty. We don't asking a stop to pay the rent, just asking to stop increase. It's the only, please support the family. There are lots of families in this county have the same situation. We don't have any mask or job, and a lot of people, mothers, we are in home. We can't go outside. We have to stay with the children's, and we need, really need your help, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Our next speaker is Tamara Todd.
Thank you.
Ms. Todd.
Good evening. My name is Tara Todd, and I'm a resident of District Two. I've lived in Baltimore County for fifteen years. I've been a renter for fourteen of those years and a small business owner for six years, and a working parent for four years. I'm here to support Bill 9520. This bill provides commonplace protections for renters who are currently struggling to make ends meet because of the current health and economic crisis. Service workers, small business owners, parents who are struggling to work while also keeping their kids safe and engaged in learning, and those who are medically vulnerable are all making really tough decisions and trade-offs during these uncertain times. Imposing late fees and rent increases during this time is adding hardship to those already struggling. Adding bad credit to this is hurting even more. The bill will leave people on better economic footing when the economic crisis is over. This bill will make it easier for our community to remain in housing and easier to pay their rent. This benefits tenants, landlords, and the rest of the community. It will leave residents in a better economic situation when this state of emergency ends. Thank you for your consideration, and please support the bill.
Madam Chair, next speaker.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, it was Carlos Ortiz, and while Ms. Todd was testifying, I searched him on our list, and he is not logged on as an attendee. I just wanted to make note of that, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. And the next speaker after that is Griselda Velazquez. Ms. Velazquez?
You're starting to break up a little bit, Kim. You're starting to break up a little bit, Chris.
Oh, my apologies.
You're good now.
Ms. Velazquez? Yes, do you need a translator, Ms. Velazquez? Yes. Okay, let me get Ms. Roque on, just a second. Ms. Roque?
I'm here. I'm ready.
You're both on. You may begin.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Griselda Velazquez, and I'm here testifying in support of Bill 9520. I'm a mother of three kids. I live with my husband, and we have lived in Racers Town for thirteen years. So every month, I pay one thousand five hundred dollars in rent, and because of the pandemic, I have been unable to work. Only my husband is working. He's the only one with a paycheck right now. I have to stay home and take care of our kids. So right now, we've obviously been really impacted by the pandemic, and we have only been able to buy enough for our groceries, and our groceries are our number one priority. Obviously, there are so many other bills that are also adding up, the rent, the car, the light bill, water, and we can't stop paying any of them. But we know that the most important thing is having food on the table. We've been having to only buy the bare minimum, and since the kids aren't in school, they're home all day long, and they eat even more. And so we've had to really cut back on the amount of groceries that we buy, and we've had to sacrifice a lot just to get by. And so we've had really cut back on the amount of groceries that we buy, and we've had to sacrifice a lot just to get by.
Y pues entonces yo por eso pues pido que nos ayuden porque los biles no nos esperan, esos siguen llegando y entonces tenemos que ajustar para pagar los biles porque si no nos corren, o sea, porque no nos permiten deber ni un dólar. Entonces, lo que quiero pues que nos ayuden y muchísimas gracias por escuchar. Este, y pues estoy muy agradecida por este darme la oportunidad de poder hablar con ustedes y muchísimas gracias. Y pues yo le voy a pasar, le doy el paso a mi comadre Maritza, que ella su teléfono se le apagó y se desconectó, entonces yo ahorita ella va a empezar.
Dame un segundo. So she also said, so thank you so much during this time, any kind of protection, any kind of relief, even if it's just limiting the amount that they can increase the rent by, even if it's limiting that to a hundred dollars and making sure there isn't a late fee of fifty dollars, they sound like small amounts. The fifty dollars can buy you food for three days. And any small amount of help means a lot right now. And she also wants to allow someone. Continúa, Griselda.
Sí, entonces yo pues estoy muy agradecida y muchísimas gracias por escucharnos y prestarnos atención y entonces le paso yo el teléfono a mi comadre que se le apagó su teléfono, entonces se desconectó, entonces yo le voy a prestar mi teléfono.
Okay, perfecto. So she says, thank you so much for giving her the opportunity to speak and for considering her testimony, and she hopes that you vote in support of the bill.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Roke.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Carlos Ortiz, his first name is actually Ricardo, which is why I could not find him on the list. So I'm going to call Mr. Ortiz next. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I am Carlos Ricardo Ortiz, community organizer for CASA, organization that supports the working families in the county, and I'm here to speak for our members. As you know, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has affected thousands of working families in Baltimore County, especially with the closure of their workplaces. For a typical family with two incomes and a monthly income of two thousand dollars, with the closure of restaurants and hotels, for example, their income fails to zero. How can they pay the fifteen hundred dollars a month rent when their sources of income have been zero? It's not a secret that security, affordable housing in the county is one of the biggest challenges. With Bill Ninety Five Twenty, we want to ensure that thousands of families will not be left homeless. I understand that the pandemic has affected everyone, but there are thousands of families who have not had the same support that businesses have had. There was an eviction probation program in the county that only lasted three days. There are families that have not had support for the federal government despite the fact that they pay taxes. Bill Ninety Five Twenty seeks to give a break to the families. It is not against the landlords. I repeat, it is not against the landlords. If those not intend to cancel the rent, we just want the families not to be fined because they lost their job and cannot pay their rent. If others county approved similar bills, you can do it here. Think of the families, the childrens who will benefit, and I really, I want to say thank you, Mr. Patoka, for this bill. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair.
Who's that? Yes, Councilman Cash.
Question, Mr. Ortiz, is he still around or?
Mr. Ortiz is still, he's unmuted.
Could you unmute him? Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, I'm sorry. I can hear you.
Yeah, this is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. CASA de Maryland, have you been working with landlords in Baltimore County to see if something can be done to help these families? I've spoken to a couple of people who own, one owns eight hundred and some units, the other one owns, I don't know, a hundred and some units. And they work very closely with their tenants. In fact, in one case, I think the delinquency is five point five percent. But every family in that apartment development has worked with the landlord except four families. So those four families, you know, are going to be a problem, but the rest of them, since they've worked with the landlord, since, you know, they're going to be okay. Have you, as a group, been able to come up with any kind of suggestions for landlords to try to avoid this problem for people whose income has been drastically reduced or eliminated?
Yes, and I want to try to say this in English, but I feel very happy if Gabby Roke can help me with some things that I can, I can think in English. I'm not sure that will be possible.
Yes, just a moment and I will unmute Ms. Roke.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Roke?
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Yes, we are working with our members and we are trying to find some solution with some landlords. Unfortunately, a lot of them don't want to make some work with us. We support a lot of families. We have a program to call. Programa de apoyo de la vivienda, Gabby, el programa que tenemos con las tarjetas. ¿Cómo se dice?
Nuestro fondo de solidaridad. We have a solidarity fund, which has been giving cash assistance to many families in the county. We've actually assisted over a hundred families in the county through the solidarity fund to help them apply for, to help them make rent payments.
One quick question. Of the landlords that you've dealt with, what percent of them would you say have been responsive and understanding and have worked with the tenants?
La pregunta fue, Gabby.
¿Cuántos de los vendedores, el porcentaje de que quieren ayudar a los miembros que trabajan con nosotros?
Well, for now, I think we only have zero. We're trying to help a lot of members because they know they need to pay the rent and they are compromised to pay the rent. But we find a history, and I think she's now in the meeting. She's one of the person who need to pay one month of fees. And this is so incredible how she don't have that support and anything and nothing. And we don't have any support of the landlords. We have zero percent. And this is, I'm not sure if I ask and I answer your question.
You have, I would urge any landlord that's listening to this to please contact your renters, the ones that are having problems, to see if anything can be done to help, some understanding. Because this could really be a problem. So thank you very much.
No, thank you so much for your question. I hope you can understand me. And please, if you don't understand nothing, just let me know and Gabby maybe can help us.
I understood you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Papel Mena, but he is not on our list. So I'm going to go to our next speaker, who is Yasenia Mendoza, and she also needs Ms. Roke's assistance. So let me get Ms. Roke. Ms. Roke? Ms. Roke? Ms. Roke, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring on Ms. Mendoza. Ms. Mendoza?
Sí.
There you go, Ms. Roke.
Cuando estás lista, Yasenia, voy a traducir yo.
Okay.
Okay, empieza.
Buenas tardes, estimados miembros del Consilio del Condado de Baltimore. Mi nombre es Yasenia Mendoza y estoy apoyando el Bill Ninety Five Twenty que protege a los inclinos durante la emergencia. Soy madre soltera de cinco niños. Vivo en Owens Mill desde hace seis años y pago mil quinientos de renta cada mes.
Can you hear me? Sí, puedes seguir, yo lo voy a leer después. So I have her written testimony, so I'll just read it after she's done testifying.
Okay.
Okay. Este, con esta pandemia del coronavirus, la situación de mi familia se ha visto infectada. Este, debo dos meses de renta y me están cobrando un mes más por no pagar a tiempo. Todo logré a pagar dos meses de un ahorro que tenía, pero ahora debo dos meses y me están cobrando un mes más, que sería tres mil quinientos, por no pagar la renta tiempo. Y ya me mandaron una carta que tengo que desalojar porque debo todo eso. Entonces, yo no he estado trabajando porque desde que comenzó la pandemia, yo este, ya nos cerraron el trabajo, ya no pudimos trabajar porque yo limpiaba casas y ya no nos dejaron entrar a limpiar. Entonces, desde entonces ya no estoy trabajando. Y tengo una bebé de tres meses y tengo dos niñas pequeñas. Entonces, no tengo que cuidar de ellas. Aunque quisiera pagar la renta, ahorita no tengo cómo pagarla. Y la verdad, necesitamos que nos ayuden porque no soy como yo, hay muchas más madres que lo necesitan. ¿Digo?
Sí.
You finished?
Ya terminaste, Yasenia?
No, puedes seguir. Entonces, ahorita no nos dejan limpiar, este, porque por miedo contraer el coronavirus, entonces podemos salir a trabajar todavía. Entonces, de verdad, yo quisiera que me ayudaran y yo estoy apoyando porque sé que no solo soy yo, hay muchas más que necesitamos.
Okay, so I will quickly read her testimony. Her name is Yasenia Mendoza. She is testifying in support of Bill Ninety Five Twenty. She is a single mother of five children. She's lived in Owens Mills for six years. She says, every month I pay one thousand five hundred dollars, but with the coronavirus pandemic, my family situation has been affected and I have not been able to pay rent since March. I've now accumulated over one thousand five hundred dollars worth of fines on top of paying back my rent. Even if I wanted to make back everything, it would take me more than three months' worth of work to simply pay back what I owe in fees. With all the savings that I had, I was able to pay two months' worth of this rent, but I still have no income and my debt continues to increase. Despite my efforts to pay the rent for a month, I've been receiving letters from the company saying that if I don't pay, I will be sent to court. Shortly before the pandemic started, I stopped working mainly because I was pregnant and during this time I gave birth to my little girl who is now three months old. Due to the health of my newborn and my other children, I could not return to work immediately. In addition, the homes that I used to clean have preferred not to call me for a fear of contacting the coronavirus. I've tried to apply to the county program to pay my rent, but it was difficult to complete from my cellphone, and it did not come in Spanish. Although I called the county to help me with the process, they told me that they would return my call and it never happened. I wasn't able to apply in time. I've always paid my rent on time before losing my job to the pandemic, but now we're going through a difficult time, which no one expected. That is why I asked the council members to approve this bill so that tenants don't have to be worried about not having enough to cover rent or late fees. I trust you will support the thousands of families that have been affected, and I thank you for your valuable time.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, I'm going to leave Ms. Roke on, and I'm going to call, Edmundo Garcia is not on. I've looked for him throughout the list. He was our next speaker.
Okay.
I'm going to call Mr. Funes, and I believe he needs Ms. Roke's assistance, so I'm just going to leave her on.
Okay, but we have to, we have to watch the timer because we have lots of speakers waiting. Thank you.
Mr. Funes or Ms. Funes?
Sí. Muy buenas tardes, compañero del Consilio. Mi nombre es Marlin Funes.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Marlin Funes.
Vivo en el Condado de Baltimore desde hace muchos años.
I've lived in Baltimore County for many years.
Manifesto mi apoyo a la legislación Ninety Five Twenty que protege a los inclinos durante el estado de emergencia.
I'm here to manifest my support for the bill, tenant protections during emergencies.
Mi familia se compone de siete personas. Somos cuatro mayores y tres niños y todos fuimos afectados al mismo tiempo con el coronavirus y para nosotros no fue nada fácil.
I live in a family, a seven household family. There are four adults and three children, and we all got coronavirus at the exact same time.
Mi trabajo ha sido desde hace más o menos catorce años, limpiar casas.
For the last fourteen years, I've earned an income by cleaning houses.
Y todavía, yo trabajo a veces dos días a la semana porque trabajo con personas mayores que decimos, verdad, que somos más vulnerables a contraer el virus y por eso todavía no me dejan entrar a sus casas.
Any of the clients that I had developed a relationship with through the years are elderly people who needed me to help them clean their homes. Obviously, because of the pandemic, they felt worried about me coming into their homes and helping them clean. I've only been able to return to work for two days a week.
Por eso les pido, por favor, a los concejales que aprueben esta propuesta de ley para todos nosotros los afectados, ya que los biles vienen cada mes y yo pago mil ochocientos dólares de renta cada treinta días.
Every month we have to pay one thousand eight hundred dollars for our rent, and no one is back to working full-time. We ask that you provide us with a few protections during this time to help families like ours. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Y una cosa más, pues nada, solamente les pido gracias por el apoyo y gracias y ojalá les pedimos de por favor, verdad, que nos ayuden, ya que no solo yo soy afectada. Hay miles y miles de personas, no importa la raza, no importa nada, que somos bastantes personas en el mundo que estamos afectados. Por eso les pido que, por favor, aprueben y nos ayuden.
Again, she just wanted to reiterate, thank you again for, Councilman Pococa for presenting this legislation on behalf of the thousands of families like hers who are struggling during this time. Thank you.
Y una cosa más, te agradezco por la oportunidad que me dieron, ya que yo he sido un poquito penosa, pero nada, tú tenía que llegar mi día y muchas gracias al señor Pacotas.
Si, Patoka.
Muchas gracias, señor Patoka. Gracias y buenas noches.
She says, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
She's welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roke, for your assistance this evening.
Of course. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, our last speaker was Ryan Coleman. Unfortunately, as others were testifying, Mr. Coleman is not signed on as an attendee. So he was the last speaker this evening, so that is all speakers that registered for Bill Ninety Five.
Alrighty.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Pococa.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of the speakers that came before this council tonight for having the courage to share personal stories, for having the courage to come and have someone else share their story. It's not easy and so I'm very thankful for those that came and had the courage. My parents were not English speakers and so I know how difficult that can be. And so again, really, really want to thank the folks that showed the strength and courage to speak before this council this evening. And also, thank you Gabby for being a trooper with translating for us.
Thank you, Councilman Pococa. Okay, we have one last piece of business this evening, but it won't be quick. If you want to turn to page twenty-one, Bill 96-20. And Councilman Jones, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will certainly do my best to be brief. I want to thank everybody who testified today on so many bills and I certainly appreciate all of my colleagues' indulgence. And like I said, I want to thank everybody who's been staying on the line to testify. Basically, let me go down the list of a few people I want to thank. In addition to... First of all, I want to thank everybody for their participation and interest in this issue. I want to thank the citizens of Baltimore County through their advocacy that's made their position known to me and my colleagues. I want to thank my other elected officials who has weighed in and provided some support and letters. I want to thank many of the organizations that have come forward and there's too many for me to list now. I want to thank the police officers who serve our citizens with distinction each and every day. Also, I want to thank many of the officers who supported this bill and offered suggestions in the crafting of this bill. I want to thank so many people in Baltimore County who have peacefully protested throughout the county and our region. And of course, I want to thank my colleagues and cosponsors for your time and attention to this important issue. Police reform is very important to everyone who lives, visits, and works in Baltimore County. Recently, we have seen horrific incidents across our nation prompting peaceful protests all across our great nation. Baltimore County has not been immune to these incidents. When I think about Chris Brown, Corinne Gaines, Eric Sopp, these are just a few names of people that have died at the hands of police. When someone is killed at the hands of police or excessive force is used and a jury of the citizens of Baltimore County say it should not have happened and render a guilty verdict and issues a judgment of thirty-eight million dollars or some other large amount of money against Baltimore County, we must realize that these funds should be going to the cost of elementary schools, roads, parks, and the services that Baltimore County provides its citizens. So that's why police reform is in everybody's interest. And it's important to note that this is not some anti-police bill. Whenever you seek improvements, some are quick to say that you're somehow against the police. That is far from the truth. Cheerleaders are great, but coaches giving advice and highlighting your shortcomings is how you get better. My purpose and the purpose of this bill is to make our police department better. One of the main goals of this bill is to ensure that everyone's encounter with the Baltimore County Police Officer is appropriate, proportional, and safe to the citizens and the officers. Most police do a great job, but we must admit that we can do better. Even though it may be a small percentage of the officers that are not doing their best, some abuse the trust that had been invested in them and some abuse the authority and use excessive force on citizens. The purpose of this bill is to try to minimize those, if not eliminate them. And I'm not going to go over the, all the parts of the bill. I'm just gonna highlight just a few parts for the interest of time. It will require police officers to intervene when a fellow officer is using excessive force and report that for protection for that officer. It will ban chokeholds or neck restraints. Only when the life of someone is at stake shall it be ever used. It will prohibit the department from hiring any police officer who has resigned or was fired from another department because of misconduct. It will talk about, it will enhance our data collection and reporting. Just recently, the county executive announced the dashboard launched by the police department, which is very helpful. And it will require annual training on de-escalation, implicit bias, as well as vulnerable individuals. So, for the sake of time, I'm going to email some of my colleagues, some amendments that I've been working on tomorrow. But just real quickly, some of those amendments will be... Should ask the police chief or her designated to meet with the county council at least once a year in a public forum and discuss the police annual report and the state of policing in Baltimore County. Number two, Citizen Review Board. The current bill will authorize the police chief to negotiate with the union in terms of citizens on the police review board. What I'd like to propose is a change where we make sure that whatever comes out of that process, at least they will be negotiating for voting members and not non-voting members. And that's just a few of the amendments. I won't go into too much detail because we have so many people here. And of course, I'll make those amendments public and we can discuss them as we move forward. But at this time, I guess, thank you so much for your indulgence, Madam Chair. I thank all my colleagues for their indulgence. I thank the county executive for his support. And let's get to the callers because I know we have quite a few. Thank you.
Okay, the first... Ms. Bell Castro?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I believe that we have the Baltimore County State's Attorney, Scott Schellenberger.
Yes, he's on as a panelist.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me, Madam Chairman?
Yes, we can. Oh, we see you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me and calling me at this time. Unlike the last time, I'm here to support Council Bill 9620, which is known as the Smart Policing Act. While many of the elements of this bill are already practiced in the Baltimore County Police Department, I understand the need to put them into law to make sure they continue, no matter who the police chief is. So shortly after the action to table the previous legislation, all of us started working together to come to a reasonable, workable, effective police reform bill that you're looking at tonight. I would like to thank Councilman Jones for getting this ball started and getting us talking about this. I think it's very important that we did. I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Bevins and all the councilmen and women for the open dialogue that we've had in order to get to this working bill. After the last bill was tabled, the chief, Chief Hyatt, the FOP, the county executive's office, the council, and myself all started working diligently to get to a bill where we wanted to get. I was a little surprised that we might see some amendments. I'll be interested in seeing them. Councilman Jones, I'll be happy to look at your amendments. I just was a little taken aback to see somebody who signed on to a bill following amendments, but I'm more than happy to look at them and offer my opinion. I can tell you all that we had to steer a very narrow course between all of the interests who agree in this case. And that is the chief, myself, the FOP, the council, and the public. And I think we, and of course, the county executive, Oshewski. And I think we found that place in this exact bill that has been drafted. I'm working on these exact same issues on the state level. I was involved in eleven and a half hours of hearings last week and I can assure you that the cooperation amongst all of us is definitely unmatched. And I think we are in a good place. Couple of quick highlights. This makes individual officers ineligible to be hired as a Baltimore County police officer if they resigned or involved in disciplinary proceedings in another jurisdiction unless specifically allowed by the chief of police. Every officer in this county, every officer in this county must receive yearly training on de-escalation, implicit bias, and use of force. They also must be trained in dealing with vulnerable people. The bill requires the department to adopt new rules and training that deal with, and honestly, they're already there, but we want to put it in writing, that deal with the sanctity of life, affirm when it's safe to do so, to use de-escalation techniques, affirm that force used at any time is reasonable and proportional. Officers must report. If a person complains of persistent pain, they must report. If they use force or some type of device or their firearm, it requires intervention by one officer if they see excessive force by another. It requires officers to make sure medical attention is sought when obvious injuries are there. The department must develop an early intervention system for officers who had problems and it increases the reporting requirements, as Councilman Jones indicated, so that the data goes public and certainly the recently-launched dashboard is a place for that to happen. The important part that we've all discussed is the bill also restricts the use of chokeholds or neck restraints. They can only be used when defending themselves or others against death or serious physical injury, which has been what it's always been. So, but it's now going to be in law. I think this draft just steers a perfect point between and with all people's interests. I hope it can pass the way it looks now. I'm here ready, willing, and able to work with everyone to get to a place where we need to go. Thank you so much and I support this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Schellenberger. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Chair, Madam Chair, our next speaker is Delegate Benjamin Brooks. Hey, Brooke.
Okay, Madam Chair, Councilman Jones and other members of... All members, I should say, of the council. Thank you for allowing me to testify before you this evening. You know, for the record, I'm Delegate Ben Brooks and I represent the Tampa Legislative District here in Baltimore County, which I am a resident, you know, and I strongly support this reform bill, 96x20. This legislation will foster accountability throughout the force, thus making it a good police department and even better one. As you well know, there are communities in the county whose trust of law enforcement is tempered at best. This bill will be very instrumental in improving that relationship. Now, I want the relationship between the policemen to be the same as it is with the firemen. You know, in some community, one is viewed as someone coming into the community to save humanity and in others, someone coming into the community to abuse humanity. Now, this is not true in every case, but enough cases to warrant concern because officers sort of mirror society. We have a whole lot of good ones, but there are a few bad ones. And I know that to some Marylanders, these concerns are viewed in the abstract. But in my community and many other communities, these concerns are real. Yeah, yeah. This bill is not an anti-police bill. And let me repeat, this bill is not an anti-police bill, but it is a pro-accountability bill. This bill would enhance accountability and make Baltimore County a safer place for both officers and citizens. The most important currency a police officer can have is the trust and the respect of the community. So with that, I strongly support this bill and I think, I want to thank the council members and especially Councilman Jones for his leadership on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Jessica Clayton. Ms. Clayton?
Great, thank you. I'm Jessica Clayton, resident of District Five and an advocate with Baltimore Women United. Thousands of women and families in Baltimore are exhausted from the vigilance of living with our current system of policing in which Black and Brown people have legitimate fear for their lives and the lives of their loved ones. I'm a white woman and that is an accident of fate and not a statement of merit. Should that fate make my two sons safe while Black mothers' sons are in danger? Policing communities in this country have a history of conflict that goes back to the beginning of policing. Far too many people of color have died because of this troubled relationship. In 2020, let's do something revolutionary. Let's agree that this stops now. In Baltimore County, it stops now. We need a pro-community, pro-police, multifaceted approach that includes relationship building, training, and accountability and transparency. To whom should the police be accountable? To the very people they serve and to each other. This act goes a long way to making change in some facets and I thank Councilmember Jones and all supporters. The amendments are critical to making a true difference in accountability, which is essential to real reform. The extension of whistleblower protections to all misconduct will help ensure we don't end up with a gun-traced task force situation. These predictions ensure that our police department is honest, as it claims to be, and that those who want to make it better are not punished for doing so. It benefits the vast majority of police who are doing right. There have to be voting civilians on the police review board. The public and the police are in partnership for peaceful communities. We must be in partnership when things go wrong. There's no way around this. Voting by community members on the board is an essential element of accountability and reporting. What a better way for the chief of police to shine a light on police excellence and to show the public what is really going on so that we can all work to build trust and end our history of conflict. The time for real reform is now. Let history show that in 2020, we courageously changed our system for the better and saved human lives. Please support the Smart Policing Act with amendments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Larry Bannerman. Mr. Banner?
Good afternoon, everybody. Hello. Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. I support the Bill 96-20. Thank you, Councilman Jones and Councilman Schellenberger and all else who are on board with this. I submitted a written proposal by the Prominent Defense Agency. This gentleman who lives in Turner Station, who has been working with police from Washington DC, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, and he's also worked at every event we've had. He actually disarmed a gentleman at one of our events and handed him over to Baltimore County Police. I'm gonna read a statement from him. I've already sent in his written proposal. My name is Nathan Kabine and I'm owner of Prominent Defense Agency. I was born and raised in Turner Station, where my mother and extended family still reside. Having strong family roots in Turner Station, I have vested interest in the viability of the community. This increase in criminal activity has overshadowed the rich heritage of my community. My passion for security coupled with the love for Turner Station has placed a sense of urgency to play a part of its resurrection. My expertise and knowledge of Turner Station gives me an advantage point in devising a plan to thwart criminal activity while bridging the divide between police and community. Simply put, crime reduction equals safety. Safety equals community involvement. Community involvement equals cohesiveness. Cohesiveness equals strength. Strength equals empowerment. Last thing I got to say is invest in training. And I don't mean just PowerPoint investment. If you haven't read it, there's a Washington Post article that says, "How a White Police Officer Fresh From De-Escalation Training Responded To A Troubled Black Woman With A Gun." He had two hours of PowerPoint training. That's unacceptable. If you're gonna train, invest. unacceptable. If you're going to train, invest in training. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Teresa Alexander. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening, Madam Chair and council members. Um, my husband and I have owned the same home in Baltimore County for fifteen years since I completed my master's degree. We're raising two children in Council District Three. We are well aware that as a white suburban mom, if I were to experience a mental health crisis, that neither my children nor myself would be shot by Baltimore County Police. We know that if I were in need of laundry detergent and walked out of a grocery store with it in Catonsville, that an off-duty police officer would not end my life over it without any repercussions. We know that if I walked out of Walgreens with a hundred dollars worth of items that we hadn't paid for, that we would not be chased down and shot by Baltimore County Police over it. Black residents of Baltimore County don't have these assurances. Mr. Katz, you said that you plan to vote against the Smart Policing Act because, in your words, instances of police showing poor judgment are not pervasive. If you feel so confident in the Baltimore County Police Department, then you could easily vote in favor of this act, knowing that it would never need to be enforced, along with the necessary amendments to give civilians power on police hearing boards, making police misconduct data, public information, and protections for whistleblowers. We are well aware that the safest communities don't have more police, they have more resources. White suburban moms in Baltimore County want justice and peace. For these reasons and so many more, I urge you to vote yes on the Smart Policing Act and to vote yes on the accountability and transparency amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, our next speaker is Claire Landers.
Hello?
Claire? Ms. Landers?
I'm trying.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Here I go. Um, I'm a resident of Baltimore County and serve as co-chair of the Baltimore Leadership Council of Jews United for Justice. JFJ thanks the cosponsors of Bill ninety-six twenty, and we are heartened that we continue to engage together on this issue. We do ask you to support amending the bill in the following ways to ensure a final bill gets us further toward mutual goals of greater public transparency and building trust in our local county police department. In June, the governor reported that the Baltimore County Police Department ranked number one in officer-involved civilian deaths in 2019. We have been ranked in the top two or three since 2014, a disturbing trend. Bill ninety-six twenty contains important measures requiring that the county begin collecting and analyzing data around use of force incidents, but to obtain the report, citizens must make a PIA request and pay fees. We believe it's reasonable to amend the bill to require that the chief present this report annually before the county council in a meeting open to the public, so the chief may answer questions, clarifying the data, and indicate understanding if the county's investment in new trainings is making a difference, and where the department is and is not making progress. Last January, Jamelle Brown, a thirty-one-year-old county resident, called 911 requesting help. He died after four county officers entered his home and deployed tasers, inducing cardiac arrest. To this day, it seems no one outside of law enforcement knows whether officers committed any breach of policy and if this death could have been avoided. So we ask you to support an amendment ensuring the chief will appoint two trained civilians to disciplinary hearing boards, so that they will participate as voting members of the panel, not passive observers. And we ask that you support an amendment to expand whistleblower protections beyond reporting use of force violations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Ms. Landers, if that would be okay.
Excellent.
Ms. Landers, are you still there?
I am.
So, when you say "two trained civilians," can you articulate what you mean by a trained civilian?
Sure. The, um, the change that was made in the LEOBR in 2016 indicated that training would be provided when asked, um, by a state commission that had developed, or a state body that had developed a training to enable civilians to participate or to be on panels, um, in an informed manner. And so that would be something the county would request of the state to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Jean Cushman.
Georgia Uckamy.
Ms. Cushman?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. I have lived in , uh, Towson Manor Village for twenty-three years, and my husband and I have too often, um, observed situations where police officers show racial bias in their policing. I have sent my written testimony by email to the council, which specifies three different incidents, but I've seen more than that. Um, I urge you to vote yes for the Smart Policing Act and the three amendments. These three amendments strengthen transparency, um, community involvement by, not by voice, but by vote, and whistleblower protections for officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Minor Brown. Are you there?
I think I'm now on.
Yeah, you may begin.
Madam Chair, councilmembers, my name is Minor Brown. I've been a resident of the state of Maryland in Baltimore County for over thirty years. I'm a senior. I live in District Two. I'm here today to testify in favor of the police reform bill ninety-six twenty, called the Smart Policing Act, with three important and necessary amendments as follows. Number one, require the Chief of Police to present each year at an open public meeting of the county council, a comprehensive presentation of the report of data collection and analysis use of force by police officers, as mandated in Section nineteen dash one dash two oh six of this bill. Two, ensure that civilians who are appointed to the internal disciplinary hearing boards will serve as voting members and do not have past or current affiliations to law enforcement. And three, extend whistleblower protection to officers reporting other officers committing any act of misconduct, conduct, not only violations around the use of force. Without these necessary amendments, I believe the current bill, which is already a pared-down version of the first bill Councilman Jones introduced in July, will be weak and ineffective. Furthermore, if the current bill, as proposed, is passed without the recommended amendments, this council will be derelict and irresponsible in recognizing the changing community in which we all live. You are our elected representatives of Baltimore County. I ask you be the leaders you can be. Recognize the opportunity to be at the forefront of making necessary change in our community and state. Take action. Baltimore County is now the largest jurisdiction of its size in the state with the most police-involved civil deaths in the entire state of Maryland. This is a local issue. Don't fail to act responsibly or kick the, or kick it down, kick the issue down the road. Don't expect the state legislature to act. Don't wait until more suits are paid out for wrongful police actions and police are severely hurt or die. The need for racial justice must be faced head-on now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Dave Rose. Mr. Rose?
Good evening. Hope I come through. Um, my name's Dave Rose, president of Baltimore County Fraternal Police Lab Four, and I'm speaking in favor of Bill ninety-six twenty as currently written. Uh, this legislation is a result of a lot of hard work and communication between the Chief of Police, the administration, the FOP, and members of county council. It speaks to the issues of statistical tracking of officers' use of force and reporting, neck restraints, employment of officers who come from other agencies, early intervention, de-escalation, and a duty to render aid and training. Many of these issues, excuse me, many of these things have been incorporated in training and practices of the Baltimore County Police Department and our members for several years, if not decades in some instances, and they are included in Baltimore County Police Department policy currently. The legislation balances the concerns of the public and the rank-and-file officers. Our members continue and will act professionally in their service and interaction with the citizens of Baltimore County, and I believe this is evident in the statistics we have provided county council that, uh, spanned the last decade. Through the hard work and communication of all parties involved, I believe this bill strikes a balance between assuring and informing the public of our policies and procedures while still enabling our members to do their jobs safely and effectively. I appreciate everybody's hard work, and I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. Um, you know, we do things differently in Baltimore County. Uh, when we disagree on something, we put it aside, and then we try to, um, in a time of partisanship and polarization, we try to find common ground. And that's what we did after this bill was tabled in August. Uh, Mr. Rose, I want to thank you very much for taking my many calls on this, um, as well as the other stakeholders who are involved in the process. Um, you know, we could have a robust police force, but also one that is humane, sophisticated, and reflective of those they serve. And I just wanted to thank you and, and everyone else who came together to, um, finalize this bill, which I am pleased to co-sponsor.
Um, Mr. Rose, this is Councilwoman Bevins. Um, while we have you on the, um, the line, I would also like to thank you, uh, for all the work that went into this. I was really, um, thinking positively that after this bill was tabled, everybody would be able to come together, and it seems that we did. Um, I especially would like to thank my colleague, um, David Marks, because I know that, um, you did a lot of work with the FOP, and I know the FOP would not be on board with this bill if it wasn't for, um, you constantly going back to them. I know you and Julian had many conversations with them. I had some with them as well, um, but I know that you were the main factor, um, of getting them on board, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, woman. Councilwoman Bevins, it was a team effort with everybody involved, and I do think we ended up with a good product, and hopefully, uh, it will be voted on favorably.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. Rose? Yes, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I guess wanted to echo your comments, uh, about Councilmember Marks, as well as yourself, and everyone else who came together. And I guess want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Dave Rose. Uh, from the very beginning, we had a lot of conversations. I forget how many hours, probably four hours or something before the first bill was ever voted on. And, uh, he's always been open, honest, and frank. And although in some cases we did not agree, uh, the conversation was cordial, polite, and honest and frank. So I thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question.
Is that, who is that? I'm sorry.
Crandall.
Oh, Councilman Crandall. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, this, Mr. Rose, it's been mentioned a couple times this evening, or maybe even more than that, that Baltimore County has the highest number of, uh, deaths by police officer in the state of Maryland. I, I guess that's over, uh, last year period. Is that correct?
Last year is the one that's been talked about the most, yes.
Okay. So in, in, in each of those cases, um, did the subject that was killed have a weapon of some sort?
In 2019, we had six officer-involved shootings involving Baltimore County officers. We had one involving another jurisdiction, I think somebody from a military police, uh, agency. Uh, but the six involving Baltimore County police officers, there were three armed with a gun. Uh, at least one of them fired at our officers. Uh, the other two pointed the gun at our officers, and three had a knife. One of them was a machete who actually swung at several of our officers, and one of our officers was actually cut and injured by the machete. And the other one was the, uh, knife-wielding subject that was up in Hunt Valley that slashed or stabbed several people. And so, and there was one, there was one who was at the end of the incident, was found to be unarmed, but the information the officer had at the time of the incident was that the subject may be armed with, I believe it was a knife or an ice pick, and, uh, it was later found at the, uh, conclusion of the incident that he did not. These incidents, these incidents can't be put in one lump as a whole to say, you know, Baltimore County had six shootings, you know, why was that number higher than it may be in the jurisdiction? Can't speak as to why somebody would point a knife at an officer, or wield a gun, or come at an officer or a civilian with some sort of weapon. But last year was the most violent year in Baltimore County. We had a record of fifty, maybe a little over fifty murders in Baltimore County. And what we've seen is, it seems as though the citizens aren't only acting more violently towards each other, they're acting more violently towards the police. And I can't speak as to why somebody would point a gun or come at an officer with a knife, but when an officer is faced with a life-and-death situation, they have to act accordingly, and for their own safety, and in accordance with their training. But they do take the, uh, the value of human life very seriously, and I respond to all of these incidents, uh, the FOP does. It would either be me or, uh, my vice president. And we speak with these officers, and in every single incident, the officer is affected by the use of force that they have to use against a citizen. So it is something that our members take very seriously. It's not something that they do, uh, they take lightly, but the, the use of force, any force, or deadly force against a member of the public, whether that force is, uh, used against the officer as a weapon, or whether it's hands-on, or whether it's a knife or a gun, uh, I do say that our members act as professionally as they can, and they, and they are held responsible for every use of force. Every use of force is then sent to the state's attorney's office to be reviewed, and the state's attorney takes whatever appropriate action they should take accordance with the law.
Right. Well, which is why the, this bill is frankly just redundant, because current policy and procedures already exist. But, um, and I would say that number of, of, of the highest in Maryland over one-year period, it's, it's not a function of a violent police force. It's a function of violent criminals in Baltimore County. And, uh, the, the easiest way for police reform is don't get in trouble with the police. If you don't commit a crime, the police have no reason to enter, to interact with you whatsoever, and probably don't want to. Um, and, uh, I've said this publicly, and I'll just, I'll say one, one more time until we can get to the, the speakers, is that I, I think that this, this whole bill throws our police, uh, into a light that they do not deserve. This is a nationally resound department, um, and, uh, I don't think it's one is in need of reform. I think it is one that should be honored and applauded for how they go about their jobs. And I think that we should all have a greater appreciation for how difficult the job can be. And, uh, I, I just, I just feel like we're heading down a road here where the criminals are going to have more rights than our police department does, because of the ability, once this is codified, because of the ability for legislation to be amended either sooner or later, perhaps by a, a council that none of us are on. Um, but once it comes into the code, it can be amended into something that, uh, can really descend our jurisdiction, like jurisdictions that we know of, um, in, into greater lawlessness. Um, and I just fear that we are not acting out of a spirit of law and order. Uh, we're just reacting to the public scrutiny that some departments around this country need to be under that scrutiny. And I don't believe the Baltimore County Police Department needs, needs this. And, um, so, uh, I've been pretty clear publicly on my stance on this, and, you know, I respectfully disagree with a lot of our speakers and, uh, with the sponsors of the bill. So, thanks.
Well, Mr. Crandall, I would, um, Councilman Crandall, I would disagree with you in even, even thinking that any of us, uh, think a certain way about police officers differently than you. I think we all respect police law enforcement on every level. This is not an anti-police bill, and Dave Rose- This is not an anti-police bill, and Dave Rose, who is a representative, the union president of the Baltimore County Police Department, is currently right now supporting this bill. Are you saying he doesn't care about the police officers of Baltimore County? He represents them. I doubt that he is coming to us and supporting this bill without support from his body. Am I wrong, Mr. Rose? Are you still there?
Yes, the Executive Board of Directors met the morning of your press conference, and they were given a copy of the current version of the bill, and the Executive Board of Directors that morning voted unanimously to support the legislation as written. I will tell you, they take the sanctity of life and the use of deadly force with the utmost responsibility. Our statistics prove that. We actually, are actually, our officers use a firearm in only 96 tent-thousandths of one percent of all calls for service. That's a point 309 percent, and the use of force is only used in one percent of all arrests. I would stack those numbers up against any agency in this country. I think our officers act responsibly, and I think they're very judicious in their use of force, and they act professionally in representing the citizens of Baltimore County.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I really appreciate the candor that my colleague, Councilman Crandall, has put forward, and I certainly appreciate all the fine accolades that's being pushed about, but the fact of the matter remains, most Baltimore County do an excellent job, but we would be naive, we would be naive and foolish if we don't think that there are police officers in Baltimore County that is not doing the right thing all the time. And too many times, we see where people that are black and brown are being abused by the police. Are they all killed? No. Some of them are just beat up, and then charged with assaulting a police officer, and then have to get a lawyer. We, I'm talking about cases where, I guess looked at one the other day, two women, mother and a daughter, on their way to a bridal shower. The only crime they committed, Councilman Crandall, was speeding, but the police wanted to take it someplace else. And the police officer wanted to question the daughter at the back of the car, and then because the mother got out of the car to want to know what's going on, he ended up assaulting the initial woman, who only wanted to stop him from attacking his mother, her mother, and then attacked her and tased her, then charged them both with assault. The same police officer was sued for another case of excessive force. So don't think for one minute that everybody who somehow get abused by the police deserve it, and don't think that everybody is acting professional, because if that were the case, we would not have had 71 excessive force lawsuits brought against Baltimore County in the last five years. Now, I've tried to be nice. I've tried to be nice, but the fact of the matter is, reform is wanted and needed, and most officers do a great job, but we would be foolish to think that they all do. And the fact of the matter is, is clear that they all are not. So we need to make some reforms to make it better for everybody. And nobody's trying to cast some dispersion against, we're going to somehow, we're going to somehow empower criminals. Nobody here likes criminals. Nobody here wants criminals. All we're doing is coming up with sensible reforms. To say we should not hire a police officer who resigned from another department because he or she was about to be fired, wrongdoing, I don't see anything wrong with that. Most police officers in the police department are supportive of measures like that. Most police in Baltimore County do a great job, and they support these measures, because they're not that far. Most police officers do not like when other officers use excessive force. They don't like it, but there's a cultural problem that we're trying to attack. There's a cultural problem. So I thank everybody for their testimony. I apologize if I ruffled some folks the wrong way, but I guess feel it's necessary to have to say it. So even in Councilman Crandall's district, when the gentleman called, when somebody called the police to say he didn't, and then he ended up being assaulted by the police officer, as we saw in Channel 11, and the only thing he did was ask for a badge number and a name, the problem is, to be quite frank, too many times we're supportive. The problem is, you can't be a cheerleader and bring about a change. You have to be open, honest, and say, hey, I can offer constructive criticism, I can point out where we can do better and still be supportive. It doesn't mean you're not supportive. Some people want to make it real simple, either you're with the police or you're with the criminals. No, I'm with the police, and I think I have a right, representing the citizens of Baltimore County, to say, we can do better, and it brings forth suggestions. So, very much for your time.
Thank you all, Councilmen, and thank you, Mr. Rose. Thank you for all you do for your members.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ariel Jubert. And... Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. Once again, my name is Ariel Jubert. As a District 5 resident, I am thankful to councilmembers Jones, Quirk, Bevins, Marks, and Patoka for their leadership on Bill 9620. It's refreshing to see bipartisan collaboration on issues that impact us every day. While I'm happy that the Baltimore County Council is leading on this issue, this bill must be strengthened with three amendments. You've heard these amendments already, but I'm going to read them because they're important. Those amendments are ensuring civilians on the police trial board are appointed by the county council, that civilian members must have voting power, requiring use of force data be presented to the county council in a public hearing annually, and lastly, increasing whistleblower protection for officers who report their peers for any misconduct. Accountability is the common thread through these amendments, and it's the cornerstone of our government. I don't need to tell you that. We have measures in place so that individuals and systems are accountable for their behaviors and outcomes. You as elected representatives are also accountable to your constituents. Accountability is woven into every layer of our government. Why is it being ignored in this instance? I'd like to point out that in the previous discussion with Mr. Rose about use of force, the other individuals in that interaction were not able to describe the situation, simply put, because they are no longer with us, while everyone else in this conversation still has blood flowing through their veins. So please consider the fact that you have not heard everything about this instance. Please consider that we need data, that we need civilians to be involved. I hope that you will make these changes to accountability and transparency for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to the next speaker, Ms. Castro, Councilman Quirk, I totally forgot, I got all self-absorbed. Councilman Quirk would like to say a few words, and Dave Rose is still on and can hear him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to publicly acknowledge really so much work that Dave Rose has put in on the bill on behalf of his members of the Fraternal Order of Police, and I also wanted to really acknowledge Scott Schellenberger, who spent countless hours really working on this, really trying to look at it from the legal nuance side, and they spent a lot of time talking to different clubs and organizations as well, and appreciate also all the advocates, all the people of goodwill and good faith. And, you know, I know there's plenty of people on all sides of the issue that mean well and want to make a good bill happen. Also wanted to give a shout-out to county exec's office, because I know Johnny O personally got involved, county executive Johnny Oshevsky personally got involved to really try to bring all sides together, and I think this bill as written without amendments is doing precisely that, and I think this is the bill that I know Councilman Jones had also agreed to. So I look forward to voting yes on this bill as it's written. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Ms. Phil Castro, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Timothy Stadler. Mr. Stadler?
Yes, hi. Hi, my name is Timothy Stadler. I've been a member of the Baltimore County Police Department for over 22 years, and I'm proud to say that I work in a department with an excellent reputation. I am here in support of the Smart Policing Act because I feel it will improve upon what we already use and apply in our everyday duties. In my years with this department, I have experienced use of force incidents, and I know how stressful and traumatic they can be for all involved. Police are not invincible, and during any event that may require use of force, we are also put at risk for being hurt or killed. While this is a risk we take every day, it's not one that we want to experience every day or take lightly. I believe that all officers would welcome training that could have an impact on their safety and the ability to successfully perform their duties, as well as to protect the safety of the citizens. I also know that the officers of this department seek to work alongside the best officers, ones they can trust and respect. The policies within this bill are common sense actions that officers already take every day. While we are all human, and we know that humans can make mistakes, the mistakes that would violate these policies would make any officer uncomfortable about working with someone who would use unnecessary or excessive force, or try to cover up or not report injuries caused by their actions. I can say that I would not want to work with or supervise an officer who felt these policies were overbearing or too restrictive. Any reasonable officer will abide by these policies. If an officer thinks they are above this and does not have to follow them, that's not the person that is fit to represent us. Right now, police departments nationwide are dealing with a negative public image. Police officers do not like being looked upon as negative, and in fact, because of this current view on police, morale has never been lower. The Smart Policing Act is a step in the right direction to correct our public image, gain trust and respect in our communities, and to continue to build upon the training and practices that we currently use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and entire county council would like to thank you for your service to the citizens of Baltimore County. Todd Crandall, there you have it, right from the mouth of one of our Baltimore County officers. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Dre McHesson.
Yep, can you hear me?
Are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. So I'm Dre McHesson. I am an activist, one of the co-founders of Campaign Zero, grew up in Catonsville, and now live in Baltimore City. I, I'll keep it brief, so I do this work across the country. We have the only database of police union contracts and the only database of use-of-force policies in the country. We have, since June, impacted over 400 cities. To go over the data one more time, so the police in Baltimore County did kill the most people in 2019 out of all jurisdictions, same thing in 2017, killed the most people, tied in 2015, and the highest in, the highest in 2015. And in 2020, remember that the Baltimore County Police Department has killed two people, one of those who was clearly unarmed. So this is not a distant thing, this is a recent trauma for so many people. Also remember that in Maryland, no officer has ever been convicted in any of these killings, and only in two cases has an officer been charged. So when we think about this, I've heard people repeatedly say that there is a part of the policy that already references neck restraints, that just isn't true, or that policy is not available to the public, but I heard the state's attorney say that, I've heard other council people say that, and there is no policy in Baltimore County that does that. I will also say that of the hundreds of policies I've looked at across the country, the Baltimore County deadly force standard is literally in the top five of the worst that I've seen. So in Baltimore County, officers can use deadly force, not even when there's imminent danger, but literally, it says when they think there's immediate danger. So that could be anything. That doesn't mean that the person might kill somebody or might threaten to kill. This is actually one of the loosest policies, I am floored actually, that it is so loose, and actually not shocked by the use-of-force data when I look at this policy. The last thing I'll say about the reporting and why the reporting is important is, though Baltimore County did launch a use-of-force dashboard, it is, as somebody who deals with this data across the country, it's impossible to know what this dashboard's showing, because the actual line data, the individual case data, is not public. And secondly, the use-of-force policy in Baltimore County actually doesn't delineate what is supposed to be reported. So looking at this dashboard is interesting, but it does not actually help us understand anything about whether these are following policy, out of policy, because Baltimore County has not actually codified that or released the line-level data as many cities across the country have. The last thing I'll say is that the amendments are important, so when you think about voting members, who should be able to hold the police accountable, if not the community? A system where the police hold themselves accountable doesn't make a lot of sense, and I know that you have a chance to stand up to the power of police unions. I am shocked across the country at the influence that police unions have to decide who holds the police accountable, but the public is the clearest accountability mechanism for the police.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Noreen Badwe.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilman Jones.
I guess wanted to thank Mr. McHesson for his testimony and his advocacy on this issue. He's been doing a fantastic job, and I know that he and Dave Rose actually spoke at a forum at the Baltimore County Public Library put on, and Chief Melissa Hyatt was there as well. So I really appreciate his involvement in this issue, and he brings a wealth of knowledge and understanding and expertise to the conversation, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Noreen Badwe.
My name is Noreen Badwe, and I ask that you pass Councilman Jones's amendment to the Smart bill. Today, I'm coming to you all solely speaking on my own behalf. I understand that police reform is a subject that is difficult for many. Having had police in my immediate family, I'm a testament to how you can both support police and police reform. They don't exist in silo. Yet I simply cannot fathom or agree with the notion that the county with the highest civilian deaths and the most lenient policies is a county that isn't ready for or doesn't need police reform. To put it frankly, I am sick and tired of complacency, the placent lies said by opposition on this call, and the refusal to admit that this county has a problem. I'm imporing you all to support the amendments Councilman Jones is proposing. These are all common sense, simple amendments that are in the best interest of civilians and officers. There's been a lot of false information said in this call, but let me share some facts as well. Baltimore County politicians who tabled the last place reform bill were silent, all take high donations from the FOP. Over the past four years, county executive Oshevsky has taken $4,400 from the FOP. Councilman Marks has taken $7,000. Councilman Crandall has taken $3,000. Councilman Quirk has taken $4,000, and Chairwoman Bevins has taken $2,000. To this, I ask, whose side will you all be on with these amendments and this bill? I've had the privilege to meet and speak with the families of Corinne Gaines and Chris Brown. Corinne was 25, had no criminal record, and was shot and killed by a Baltimore County police officer during a known accident. They also shot her five-year-old son, who she held during her last breath. Chris Brown was an unarmed 17-year-old who encountered an off-duty police officer outside of his home, and for no good reason, was put in a chokehold and killed. He was also unarmed. None of these officers were charged or convicted. This county has some of the most lenient policies on deadly force in this country, the most lenient reporting policies, and the highest number of killings of civilians in this state. Whose side will you be on? The public, the marginalized, and the voiceless, or the FOP? We're at a turning point in history, and it's up to the seven of you to decide which side of this we'll be on. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Next speaker, please.
Councilwoman, it's Scott Schellenberger. I'm sorry. The individual who hurt Chris Brown was prosecuted, he was found not guilty by a jury. So I just want to make sure that record is clear. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. I don't know, just... Thank you, Mr. Scott Schellenberger.
Madam Chair?
Yes, next speaker, please.
Okay. Our next speaker is Bridge Dumei. Ms. Dumei?
Hello, thank you. Just to remind you, I'm with 1199, where the Healthcare Workers Union, and we represent over 2,000 members in Baltimore County, and we are here in support of the Smart Policing Act, under the condition that it has all three of the proposed amendments included. We are a labor union, so we support worker protections, and that includes expanding whistleblower protections to protect good, apple officers on the police force. We need accountability in trial boards. That means that the civilians have voting power, and it also means that civilians on the board do not have any prior employment or otherwise affiliations with police departments. And transparency, I would just like to go back to the comments Dre McHesson made about the dashboard. Yes, there's some data up, but it doesn't go nearly far enough in providing the context. We want to make sure that everyone has access to clear data presented to the council annually in a public report. So I just want to let you know that one of our members, Cynthia Gilchrist, submitted So I just want to let you know that one of our members, Cynthia Gilchrist, submitted written testimony on this bill. She is a healthcare worker, and she cares a lot about the mental health de-escalation and unconscious bias training, and she also really wanted to underscore the importance of civilians on the hearing board. Now, I just want to say, the comment that if you're not doing anything wrong, you don't have anything to worry about, is completely disingenuous. Rihanna Taylor was shot in her bed. Tamir Rice was playing with a toy, and you have had other examples here today of black and brown people talking about how they have specifically been profiled and abused by police officers who have either conscious or unconscious bias. So I need to make that very, very clear. And also, I'm hearing a lot about this being a compromise bill. I'm glad the council came together. I'm glad the county executive came together and the FOP came together. The community was not a part of that, and that is why these amendments must be included. So I encourage you all to please vote yes on this bill with the strengthening amendments for accountability and transparency, so we can build a safer Baltimore County for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Michelle Kim. Ms. Kim? Ms. Kim? Ms. Kim, are you there? Michelle Kim?
Okay, you might want to move on to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jordan Harburger. Mr. Harburger?
Yes, here.
Okay, begin your testimony.
Yes, my name is Jordan Harburger. I live in the fourth district. I want to thank the council for hearing what we have to say, the citizens, those of us who've chosen to be on the line with you today. I'm in support of the bill with the strengthening amendments. But tonight, from Mr. Schellenberger, from Mr. Rose, and from several members of the council, there's only where the bill is written. And perhaps they're right, I don't know. I'm prepared to be convinced by them that this bill will achieve its objectives without the amendments. I don't know. I also don't know how the bill will be damaged in a way, or the security of the citizens or of the police will be in any way impaired if have voted in representatives on the hearing. I also don't understand how the bill will be weakened or in some way impaired, where the police heard, the citizenry heard, had protection for whistleblowers. And I'm prepared to be convinced that it would be better without those amendments, but until I reason why those amendments shouldn't be adopted, I'm convinced that they are needed. And finally, this dashboard, I went to read it today, and I couldn't find anything use of force. I did see that there were not six killings in Baltimore County in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, but rather eight police shootings. So somebody doesn't have their statistics right that they're reporting in this call. The dashboard says that there were, that there were eight. But I tried to find excessive use of force data, and I couldn't find it there. So I don't, I want to understand how the police will be hurt, or the citizenry will be hurt if we don't bring, have the chief come and report once a year on the progress in achieving what is outlined so well in the preamble of the Smart Bill. Please go and read the preamble and tell me how it would hurt if we do these three things.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Linda Dorsey Walker.
Hi.
Ms. Walker, are you there?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Um, hear me?
My name is Linda Dorsey Walker, and I come before you today to testify. Since we have exceptions, we have no, I can't determine where the majority is.
Yes, I can, but there's someone else. Because I can't, in the background.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. I'm Linda Dorsey Walker, and I come before you today to testify of Bill ninety-six twenty, proposed amendment, and I also have some other recommendations that I, or perhaps just clarifications, that I think need to be considered as part of the bill. Please amend this bill to require that an off-duty officer, plainclothes officer who responds to an incident in which he or she will attempt containment, constraint, or arrest, to identify his or herself at least three times verbally as a Baltimore County law enforcement officer acting in that capacity at that moment, prior to exercising force, especially physical assault or discharge of a firearm. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, please require then, an officer charged with extreme use of physical force or gunfire, whether on duty or off duty, that resulted in serious physical harm or death to a victim, who was not jailed or fired, such as the officer in the case of Christopher Brown, should be required to participate in annual anger management or psychiatric evaluation as an ongoing condition of retaining their job as a Baltimore County law enforcement officer. No officer with a hairline trigger is supposed to go untended to. Number three, require under section nineteen-one-two-six-v-seven, that an office, that police report, following the use of force by an officer, require not just the age, race, and gender of the person be included, but also the condition or impairment of that person, including whether that person is physically disabled, wheelchair-bound, wearing a leg or body cast, psycholized, agitated, or apparently on drugs, alcohol, death, legally wine, or mentally or intellectually limited. Because we've had too many situations where officers not prepared to handle people's physical or mental impairment show up at situations, and it's just recorded as any other arrest instead of one involving a person with limitations or impairments.
Okay, Ms. Walker, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Cheryl Gottlieb.
Hi. I don't have much to say. I just want to say that I am in favor of the bill with amendments, and I strongly urge you to pass the transparency and accountability amendments, and yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Marlee McBride. Ms. McBride?
Yes.
You need to begin.
I have been a resident of Baltimore County and a homeowner for over twenty years now. This bill, I thought I could go with it until I saw on page six, where the police, I see why they're going along with it, because they have been given immunity. I don't think that we need to put into law that they should be immune, and they should be getting paid after they hurt someone, that they still can receive their salaries. I think all that is covered in the Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights. Two, it was, I see why Schellenberger and the FOP are in agreement with it, because it's protecting them. It's protecting the police. Scott Schellenberger, Corinne's case, he fabricated, fabricated evidence. He pictures Scott Schellenberger and for, and for a failure to appear in traffic court, he said it was okay for them to get assault weapons and break into her apartment. Corinne was home. She wasn't out on the street with a gun. This bill needs to put, it needs all those three amendments. I agree with Ms. Walker, Mr. McKesson, this thing is too loose. There is nothing in here that I see that's going to prohibit those policemen from being empowered. They will again to kill somebody. How do you get somebody's apartment key and go in for a failure to appear in traffic court? Not a felon. How do you say it's okay for the policeman? They're gonna do it again. They're gonna take and body slam a seventy-six-year-old grandmother. They're going to do it again, and I don't see anything in here that's gonna stop them.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Charlene Harvin. Ms. Harvin?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. On January thirteenth, two thousand twelve, my seventeen-year-old nephew, Christopher Brown, was choked to death by a Baltimore County police officer. Mr. James Lavoy was charged with murder but was later acquitted and is currently still on the police force. If chokeholds were banned eight years ago, my nephew would still be with us, and he would have had an opportunity to go to college, start a family of his own, and a career. Christopher was a student at Randallstown High, he played football, was on the lacrosse team, and a member of the ROTC. He was a member of Colono Baptist Church, where he served God as a worship. Our family continues to grieve for our loved one, but we hope that Christopher's death will not be in vain. If you pass this bill, I feel we would have some recompense, since we don't have any justice at this point with Mr. Lavoy still Baltimore the police force. Also, I'm concerned about the statement that the one council said that all people have to do is obey the police, and they don't have anything to worry about in terms of police reform. If you're driving while black or just living while black, that is absolutely not true. Please pass this bill and the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Victoria Vestrich.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Okay. Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman and Chairwoman and Councilmembers. My name is Victoria Vestrich. I'm a resident of District Two, and I am in support of Bill ninety-six twenty with the recommended amendments. The three amendments, county council selecting a pool of civilians for the hearing board, making more robust data reporting, and more robust whistleblower protections. Most of my points have been stated in previous testimony this evening, and today I will just relate a personal story. I am a white woman in a highly affluent, nearly all-white neighborhood. My dear friend and her spouse are, who live in my community, are parents of a biracial son. He is now a young adult. By the mere color of his skin, he is at the same risk as black and brown individuals at risk for excessive police force throughout Baltimore County, as evidenced by the cases of these past years. Thank you for your time, and please support the bill. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Ryan Gaines.
Hello?
Mr. Gaines?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. How you doing, Mr. Jones? Thank you. Thank all y'all. But I am Ryan Gaines. I would like to say real quick, I'm Corinne Gaines' father, and I want to say that I do support this bill, but only because I support any type of positive change. But I want to tell y'all something, right? Was it no public, was it no public saved by killing my daughter? Who did that help? If the FOP and Schellenberger support this bill, then you better believe they pretty much got more rights than us. If you ask me, they talking about rights. Listen, if you say, do whatever the police say, you say obey the police, you know what I'm saying? I understand they got guns, but still, if you're saying, do whatever they say, dude, then who's the public servant? Who's the public servant? Y'all making us the public servants? Listen, we can't, we can't get justice because the state's attorney, Schellenberger, is married to the police department. If the man fabricating evidence, you don't win a thirty-eight million dollar case for nothing. That's the people. That's the people. You know what I'm saying? The people is not signing on to be public servants. The police are. You know, so any, 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 any change that y'all do, I'm going to, I'm going to support that. Any change that y'all do, I'm going to support that. I'm really hurt, I was just crying, so I'm going to cut it off right here. That's, that's all I'm going to say right now. By the way, nobody's from the county. I heard somebody say that, you know, people saying that they spoke to the family and all this. No county officials, nobody apologized to me, even after we won the case. Even after we won the case, it's been four years to me. It's been four years for me. After my, after my daughter died, after we won the case, as far as I'm concerned, I've got treated even worse. It's not just a problem with color, it's also a problem with religion. You know, I know I don't have my grandchildren. I know the police didn't, didn't look at Corinne's contract, where they say, if something happens to her, who they supposed to contact? You know what I'm saying? Her children is in the hands of somebody that actually hurt them, because, because they ain't want to, they didn't want to deal with me. And they didn't want to deal with me, not just because I'm black, but also because I'm not Christian. But thanks for the effort. Keep trying, keep trying till you get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Tori Mason. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. I want to first thank Councilman Julian Jones for all his dedication, his tenacity for passing this bill. Also want to give out my deepest respect and condolences to Corinne Gaines' family and Mr. Brown's family as well. But I would just say that this bill is desperately needed. I am, have been a resident in Baltimore County for over twenty years. I have seen my husband arrested for no reason and dropped off in the middle of six ninety-five. And he walked back to a gas station to call me to come get him. No charges were ever filed against him, so I don't know what he was arrested for. I had him one time, we had moved, so we didn't get mail about a court date, and he was, they came in there, he came with his hands out, and he said, you're surrendering myself to you. And one of the ladies, police officer, looked at my seven-year-old son, and she said, your father's going to jail today, ha, ha, ha. So, and also, I'll say even in Baltimore City, I saw men that were desperate, they were doing those block races, they would tell them, you're just, you could be going to school, getting on the bus, they would tell you, lay out, the police are here, lay out, everybody's on the ground with their hands out, they're walking around, patting people down, talking smack, grown men sitting there crying, saying, I thought I went to Vietnam War for this country, and I'm still being treated like less than human. So I would encourage the council to pass this bill. But also, I say, people that, black and brown people, power to the people. They don't want to hear you, Kathy Bevins, she wants to go off or not be on the long line. Mr. Marks, Mr. Crandall, who are sitting here rolling their eyes, people are talking, you know what then? Boycott their areas, boycott their neighbors, boycott their restaurants and their malls, and see for how far they get. Put your money where your mouth is, they don't want to listen to you. I boycott all of them. I have been in any of their areas in years now, and I refuse to go until they listen up, because it's not just about what they want. You're not a black person, you don't know what we go through, so you have no right to sit there and roll your eyes and say that because we don't do the right thing, we should get arrested. Power to the people, black lives matter, good night.
Well, I don't know what that was about, but next speaker.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Vonda Holman Carter. Ms. Holman, are you there?
I am, thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair and Council members. My name is Vonda Holman Carter, and I'm here on behalf of the Sorority Incorporated, Beta Alpha Tau Zeta Chapter. We are steadfast in our dedication to upholding the ideals of service, scholarship, sisterhood, and final womanhood that Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated was founded upon. The mission of our chapter is to provide community service to the underserved population in Baltimore County with a focus on the northeast areas of Baltimore County. As a nonpartisan organization, we're here tonight to bring attention to our concerns about police brutality and its impact on our community. We are deeply concerned with the national and local incidents of police use- of police use of force against Black men and communities of color. African-Americans are still experiencing real trauma from four hundred years systematic racism, including incidents triggered by police. Too many lives are being lost and families are being broken by racism and policing and the criminal justice system. Last week, Baltimore County unveiled a new data dashboard on police use of force incidents. Here in the county, we have realized eight hundred and fifty-three use of force incidents since January one, two thousand seventeen, including several officer-involved deaths in the past year. Last year, a review of Baltimore County Police Department traffic stop data showed that African-American citations at a higher rate than visuals. Increased interactions with police increased the probability of Black residents being abused or killed by the police. We need to see police brutality against communities of color and our undeserved populations in, and let us find alternative ways of serving the needs of Baltimore County residents through fair housing, affordable housing, at fair policing, affordable housing, access to health care, and addressing other social needs. Thank you for allowing me to comment tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Deanna Bergman. Ms. Bergman?
Hi, how you doing? How's everyone doing tonight? So, I'm in favor of this bill, and I want to share with you something that happened a few days ago. We had a thirty-five-year-old male from Silver Spring, Hispanic male, that was a vulnerable adult. He ended up taking the extra vehicle from his household and had left his house for three or four days, ended up in front of my house arguing with teenage boys that didn't have a license that were driving his vehicle. I ended up calling the police to ask for assistance, and the gentleman kept telling us that he was under the influence of alcohol, yet we didn't smell any alcohol. We didn't know how to help him, but eventually we were able to run the tags and talk to the gentleman's father. It also had a language barrier. Well, this is why this bill is important, because we need our officers to be actually trained to be able to communicate with the community, and so they could better serve us. But at the same time, what I'm really bothered with is that the community that the police officers are supposed to serve, we don't have a vote. And if we don't have a vote on that table as a citizen, we don't have a voice. And that's not being part of the conversation. So I want to see that amendment strengthen that opportunity. And State Attorney Schellenberger, I know that you provided some information, and I want to leave you with this number here. One out of fifty-four children in the United States since 2020 are diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And those children don't stay on the spectrum, they eventually become adults. We have to be able to train our police officers how to work with a vulnerable population of children that will be adults and don't have social skills like many others do. Okay? So it's very important that we are allowed to have people in the conversation that are raising children like this as adults. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Julian Jones, for pushing forward on this bill. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next registered speaker was Rebecca Nelson, but she is not on our attendee list. So I'm gonna move on to the next speaker, who is Lori Brown. And Ms. Brown is not on as well. Our next speaker after that is Raymond Briggs.
Mr. Briggs?
How you doing? Good evening, council. I just want to do a historical thing real quick. During nineteen sixty-five, they had the Watts riots by the L.A. Police Department and the Sheriff Department because of their abuse and their brutality tactics. So from nineteen sixty-five through nineteen ninety-nine, there was a whole lot of tension going on with the police department and their treatment of African-American people trouble there in California. What happened was that you had Rodney King come along. Rodney King, you all know the case. The police department, well, the U.S. Justice Department came in in nineteen ninety-nine, and they put in a dissent decree, that was Department of Justice. And this dissent decree caused the department to try to make some changes. With the decree, the department made good changes. Whereas the police force, they were still aggressive, but they had community input there. I'm not saying that Baltimore County should be doing all that or they'd have a dissent decree, but you're headed that way. Mr. Crandall, you're there. If you were my color, my skin color, I see that you were a police officer. No, if you were a police officer and you saw me with your attitude, you would be harassing me just because of your attitude. You don't understand that I had to give my sons that speech that we all have to give them because of what police officers do. But I would say that I shared some information and documentation, I don't have enough time to speak, about L.A. That police department had a gun battle in February twenty-eighth of nineteen ninety-seven, whereas it changed everything because those officers or those commanders went training around the country, and they unpacked the way police departments now train their officers. Are you ready? Cut me off. That's where they train their officers. Am I off?
Yep, you're off. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Raymond English. Mr. English?
Yes.
Can you maybe begin your testimony?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of County Council. I have a prepared statement from the NAACP of Baltimore County and Ranulston. The Baltimore County and Ranulston branches of the NAACP are testifying to express opposition to the language of Sections nineteen-one-two-oh-eight A, Section nineteen-one-two-oh-one I, and Section nineteen-three-two-oh-three of the Bill ninety-six twenty, as it is currently drafted. We urge the Baltimore County Council to consider changes recommended by both branches for the following reasons. Number one, Section nineteen-one-twenty-two-oh-eight A, use of force restraint prohibited. We suggest changing the language to say police officers may not use a neck restraint that restricts airflow. Other jurisdictions have passed legislation to ban chokeholds with no exceptions, and we fail in Baltimore County to see that that has been done. Section nineteen-one-two-oh-one I, police officers, we suggest removing the last sentence that says unless the person's application has been reviewed and approved by the chief of police, it is our opinion that if the application committed, committed, it could...
Are you on mute? Self-tension? Okay. Sir, your time is up.
All right.
Next, thank you for calling. Next speaker, please.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I had myself muted. Our next speaker was Kathy Wolfson. She was on earlier, and I'm assuming that she could not stay on. This has been a lengthy meeting, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker, but I do know that she wasn't on at one time, but she's no longer.
Okay.
Our next speaker after that is Angela McLean. Ms. McLean?
Yes, ma'am.
You may begin your testimony.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. I implore you to vote yes on the ninety-six twenty Smart Police Reform Bill that you have this evening, as well as the three additional amendments that will be voted on October fifth, that we require the chief to report annually with a report of police, two, to ensure civilians will serve as voting members and not have past or current affiliations, and three, offer whistleblower protections. I do find it very disheartening that the chief is yet again completely absent from these discussions. At our last community forum, excuse me, she wasn't able to answer any of Councilman Jones's questions, statistics, and left that four-hour forum that we now found out was fabricated. Excuse to leave, and now tonight she does not show. Her lack of leadership and engagement in terms of presence and passion regarding these issues is circumspect at best. Let me be clear. I've lived in District One for most of my fifty years. I've held many leadership roles in our community, and as much of this past month, our family was recently awarded Hometown Heroes for our dedication, of which we have provided meals and celebrations to our local fire, police, and EMT in Catonsville. And over our years of service, we've become very aware of the disparities and the atrocities of care and compassion that our brothers and sisters of color suffer from in this community. I encourage each of you, the twelve that enjoy the white privilege to look empathetically through the lens of horrors that so many of our brothers and sisters of color live with on a daily basis in this county. There are recent police heinous crimes that you, Mr. Crandall and Mr. Catch, so smugly disregard that are not issues here in Baltimore County, and yet, we have seventy-one lawsuits that are against the county for excessive force here as just as heinous. Councilman Catch, you are not aptly named. You can't catch a thing as you are grossly negligent in understanding the facts. Tom Crandall, by proposing this bill as unnecessary because already an elite force, let me make you aware of Baltimore County's son op ed, the Smart. Johnny O., your C.E. said today, "The Smart Policing Act includes critical new policies championed by Councilman Jones. Earlier this year, like banning chokeholds, this bill will also codify into law." Quote, "C.E. At a time when many of us feel more divided and more alone than ever before, we are doing the unthinkable in Baltimore County, pushing meaningful bipartisan leadership to improve policing." Catch and Crandall, take a knee. You're in the wrong lane. Let me reiterate, there have been seventy-one lawsuits.
Ms. McLean, your two minutes are up.
Thank you, Mr. McKesson, for your leadership with Campaign Zero, and I must say, it's important to contend that the dashboard data is right now not public, and it's not working, and we must...
All right, Madam Chair. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Brenda Petrov. Ms. Petrov?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
Okay. Originally, I was against this, but I didn't realize that this was at law for the personnel policies to not be able to be changed. But there are a couple of things that, there are a couple other amendments that I think need to be happening. For the PIA request that people would ask for, I think they need to redact number four, five, and six because people could figure out who the police officers are and then would retaliate against them. On page number six, number five, and on page number eight, the words "may" objectively need to be removed because... Why? Because that could be interpreted any way you want it. Let's see what else. Also, they already talked about the police chief being able to decide whether to bring in an officer that's already been terminated or resigned because of charges against him in another area. I don't think it should be up to the police chief. I don't, they should be able to be hired here because why us taxpayers pay for a lawsuit when they do something wrong here? Let's see. What else do we have? And they release all the data out to the public. I don't know if it's gonna also have that information for the police officers about their units and their rank and that kind of stuff, but I don't think that should be on there either. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
One moment, Madam Chair.
Hold on one minute, Ms. Castro. Ms. Rogers?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have something to say? I'm sorry.
No, no problem. I know we're trying to get through the testimonies, but I just want to acknowledge that Chief Hyatt is in the audience. She is listening to the testimony, so I just wanted to acknowledge that for those who are present. The last speaker said that she was absent. She is not absent.
Okay. And you can add, or I can add, that the night that she did leave our last work session, that wasn't fabricated, there was a double homicide on the east side, and that's where she went that night, and I know that for a fact. So I just don't want to slow the speakers down by interacting with each and every person. So, but thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Larry Gibson. Bear with me one moment. Mr. Gibson was having technical issues, so we're getting him on in a different way. Mr. Gibson?
Yes, I'm here. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may begin your testimony. Yes, you may begin your testimony.
How do you do? I'm a law professor and a former Associate Deputy Attorney General of the United States. And as you develop your use of force policy, I'm urging that you put something there to limit a practice that has come too common of police officers forcing citizens to the ground while being arrested. This practice is really starting to, is causing harm, is causing unnecessary escalations. Forcing men, women, and children to lay on the ground is not only dehumanizing, it's medically dangerous and usually unnecessary. There are many people who cannot lay on their stomachs without great discomfort. There are breathing difficulties, sometimes it's pregnancy, obesity, heart conditions, muscleitis, other bodily injuries that they may have that the police officer may not know about, such that that causes great harm or injury. And then applying handcuffs to people on their stomachs and applying pressure to them just sort of compounds the injury. We've had several problems, and even deaths are going from that practice. And the increasingly compelling reason to stop this is that the ground is filthy. In this period of this pandemic, that's where virus, droplets, spit, sweat, trash, and other harmless substances fall. Lying on one's stomach face to the ground is risky under normal conditions, but it's deadly, it can be, in the middle of a pandemic. In addition to the fact that it just so is escalating, what we often have are people who panic, citizens who are already afraid of the police, panic, the matter becomes physical when the frightened citizen reacts to increasingly aggressive conduct by the police officers. So I'm hoping in your use of force protocols, you will address this problem.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Our next and last speaker.
Our next and last speaker.
Can I just take a minute to thank Professor Gibson for his time and his advocacy on this issue? He is very, very well-known and authored many books, and we are very privileged to have him testify today, as well as he did last time. And I really appreciate you taking the time to weigh in and share your knowledge with us, Professor Gibson. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Jones.
Madam Chair, could I have a moment to say a word to Professor Gibson?
Sure.
Yes.
So thank you, Professor Gibson, for your words. And to me, I've, it's been very disheartening to see a human being's face being pressed against the street or the concrete in certain situations, not necessarily here in Baltimore County, but for you to kind of add more information for me, it's not just dehumanizing, but it's also so insanitary in a time where we're living in a health crisis. And so, and I suggest it because there are these nuances of 2020... And so these, and I suggest it because there are these nuances of 2020, and I'm not saying that all of this occurred in 2020, but, um, you know, it's, it's come to light certainly in a very different way, and, uh, it's, uh, to me exponentially more harmful in 2020. So thank you for your insights.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, speaker.
Yes, Madam Chair, our last speaker this evening is Jasmine Richardson. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I wanted to first say thank you to Councilman Julian Jones for leading this effort for fighting to keep police reform in front of the council and to bring this bill back. Incredibly important, and this is, you know, what, when people vote, this is what they're hoping to see, that you fight for the things that matter that's going to affect the community for long after your term. Um, I also want to thank everyone that is supporting this bill tonight. It's so vitally important. Um, I do, I do always want to recognize the families that have been traumatized. Um, I have to call out Chris Brown, who was a camper at my camp that we did. Um, he was the sweetest little boy in the world, and, um, I, I, um, I just wanted to say that his life mattered so much. He was the precious little, um, child that we lost, and, um, for him, I just want to hope that you guys, um, find it in your hearts to pass this bill. I do want to say, I hope that you can amend it to say that you should not restrict airflow because no one should have the right to take somebody's life unless it truly is danger. And I'm just, unfortunately, I just hope that we can restore the faith, um, between the police and the community, and I think that this will be a really helpful, um, effort to do that. And so I, um, wanted to say that I know that all police aren't bad, and by doing this, it doesn't say that all police are bad, it's just saying that there's accountability. The data is highly important, and, um, it just matters so much that this vote gets passed. It, it will say so much to the community, and we appreciate everybody's effort because the talk that African-American families have to have generation after generation with their kids, it would be so wonderful to get in with this generation and that kids can grow up trusting the police and not being worried about their lives. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you. And you get the prize for waiting the longest. Thank you for holding on so long to make your comments. Okay, I guess...
Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to let Julian go first since we were just discussing his bill. Go ahead, Julian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I wanted to thank everyone for their testimony. We certainly appreciate, uh, hearing from all the citizens. We appreciate, uh, you staying on the line, as long as I say, and, uh, I'm guess proud of everyone because this is what democracy looks like, and this is how we affect change. So thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'd like to thank all the members who testified.
Uh, thank you. Councilman Marx?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair, and, um, Councilman Jones, thank you for your sponsorship of this bill. Thank you to all who had constructive suggestions, as we consider this important legislation. The reason why I was able to vote in August was because the public did not know the breadth of the amendments that were being considered. Um, I look forward to seeing the three amendments that have been referenced tonight. This is the second time we've had a discussion on police reform legislation, and sadly, both times, the level of discourse seemed to deteriorate as the evening went on. You have a bipartisan coalition that came together to craft a police reform bill, and yet, you speakers chose to engage in personal attacks against several council members. You have the return order of police president who took an awful lot of heat for supporting this bill, and yet he and the state's attorney, who also worked on this legislation, are attacked. I'm a Republican. I've been criticized for working on this issue, but I'm doing it because I still believe that people of goodwill can come together to build a stronger Baltimore County. In closing, I want to quote a great jurist who saw her fair share of argument over her storied career. He said, "You can disagree without being disagreeable." Who said that? Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Certainly, we can follow her model. Thank you.
David, I'm so truly proud of you, David, for, for quoting, for, for quoting, uh, our Chief Justice. Julian, thank you, uh, for, um, remaining strong and steadfast and seeing this bill through. I know that, like always, when we have, um, legislation, sometimes it's not everything that we want, but I think this is such a great beginning for police reform, and that come together, I think is phenomenal. And I just, you know, this is, this is just such a great place to be right now, and actually it's a part of history, and we are going to make a difference, um, in people's lives on both sides, both the police and the citizens of Baltimore County. So thank you, my friend, uh, for your steadfast, um, involvement in this bill and the way that you believe in it, and your, um, uh, what's the word I want to use? Tenacity, I guess, um, to thank you. And I want to thank, uh, all my colleagues, uh, for the time that's been spent on this bill. I know it's been some long work sessions and, and council meetings, and we still have to get through it, uh, for the vote. So thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. And Chris Bel Castro, thank you. We know it's, it's not easy finding all the callers and keeping us straight and muting and unmuting, so thank you so much. Thank you for all your late nights at the office. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
My pleasure. Yes.
I, I guess, I want to, as well, and, uh, been steadfast, and we've had a lot of communication, and we've had a lot of issues that we worked on, including this one. We've always come together to do what's in the best interest of the citizens, and I want to thank each and every one of my council members, including, including Todd Crandall. Sometimes we don't agree, uh, but we always are respectful of one another, and, you know, I don't agree all the time with my wife. So, uh, so, you know, this, this is, this is what democracy looks like, right? But I guess when I guess take a minute to say that, I can say to each one of the council members, we all come from a different place, a different point of view, but we all are here for the same reason, to do what's best for the citizens of Baltimore County. So I guess wanted to thank each and every one of you for your indulgence today, and, I guess wanted to thank you so much for your partnership.
Well said, Councilman, well said.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think it'd be appropriate to close this meeting with a simple but profound, uh, quote from the notorious RBG, and that quote was, "Collegiality is core to the mission."
That's one point.
Okay. That's one out. Are we ready to close? Okay, thank you. My debate starts in 12 minutes and 32 seconds. Good night, everybody.